Praise the Lord, everyone. Good evening. Welcome to our March 11th, 2025 City Council meeting. Please stand for invocation by Dr. Walter, followed by the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, we thank you for this day. We thank you for the city council, our staff members, our city residents, our schools, our staff members there. We thank you for the work we do in our community. Give us guidance, give us wisdom, give us patience, give us peace. Peace of mind, peace in our city, peace on council that we have the peace of you that we talk about, that we love, that we cherish. In your precious name, we pray, amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, and for the public here in attendance. Outside of city council chambers, you have met maybe one of our fire inspectors. Back on that corner just behind our officer over his right shoulder, there's a placard that explains what capacity is. Capacity in this room stated in 2000. I looked at it the other day because I wanted to make sure I understood where we would be, is 165 people. So our fire inspector is keeping count, and I think we have met that. So if there are people who are outside now that are hearing my voice, there's an overflow room just behind, just this gentleman with a sharp chapeau that I'm looking at, just through that doorway there and out in the foyer there in the city hall. So as people come and go, the fire marshal will then afford more people to come in. So we ask that you work with us about the stated number. And so Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the city council, I just want to keep everyone safe, make sure that we understand what capacity is, and we have our great fire department working with us to help ensure such. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Tonight's agenda is divided into four sections. Consider agenda, public hearing, public comment, and general business. First item, consider agenda. Includes routine items that has been approved by, that can be approved by one vote. May I have a motion on the consent agenda?
Mr. Mayor, just briefly, I pressed base with Councilmember Feraldi ahead of this meeting, and he asked if I pulled the February 18th minutes just for clarification on one of the items. So I'll be pulling that, moving it to a separate date.
Yes, ma'am. Thank you. Yes, ma'am.
I also need to pull for myself the February 6th meeting because I was not at that reading. We can separate that as well.
So looking for a motion, I think maybe for just the first two, which are second readings?
Yes. I'll amend that, motion for the first two.
Okay, thank you. Second.
Second. May I have a vote, please?
I would like to point out one thing, Mr. Mayor.
Yes, yes.
This, this is the second reading to purchase a $2.4 million ladder truck for a fire department. This is a huge thing. So just want to point that out.
Okay.
All right, I'll initiate the vote now. The motion passes, seven zero.
Okay. Yes, sir. Item number four?
Second.
Now, vote, please.
Initiating the vote now. The motion passes.
Next item on our agenda. These are required by law or directed by council. Procedure, staff would give a presentation. The public would give comments. Individual have three minutes to speak. If speaking for a group, you have five minutes. Each speaker must say which group they represent. Each group gets one spokesperson. Each speaker must say their name and locality of residence. All comments, all comments. The public hearing will close. After comments, the public hearing will close, and council will decide. First item, consideration of adopting an ordinance to change and relocate the polling place of the third precinct of Ward Two and the first precinct of Ward Three. Mr. Dan Pence.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of the council. As you just stated, the goal here is to discuss the relocation of the polling place Third Ward First Precinct and Second Ward Third Precinct. The public notice has been given in papers on February 26th and March 3rd for the hearing with the assistance of the city attorney. Purpose in action, Electoral Board for the city of Lynchburg voted at its meeting in February 6th to change a polling place for precinct 301 from the Public Library to West Lynchburg Baptist Church. At the same meeting, they also voted to move the polling place for precinct 203 to the, from the Jubilee Family Center to Greater Brookville Church. The new polling places meet the requirements of Section 242310 of the Code of Virginia. The polling place 4203 Jubilee Family Center has notified us that they will no longer serve as a polling place in Greater Brookville, has agreed to step into the gap there. Public Library, which serves as a polling place presently for 301, is no longer in Ward Three. We actually moved it out, kind of by default, when indeed we were sticking lines we're drawn. We've continued to leave it there. It's not too far out of the, out of the, out of Ward Three, but it isn't in Ward Three. So the board wanted to, Electoral Board wanted to align that more with the actual lines of the ward. And so West Lynchburg Baptist Church has volunteered to serve the community in this capacity. Proposal we have is Electoral Board would like the city council to approve the use of Greater Brookville Church as a polling place for 203 and West Lynchburg Baptist Church as the polling place for precinct 301. This will begin at this upcoming June primary on June 17th, and we continue through all subsequent elections throughout the indefinite future unless or until another polling place is needed to take these polling places place. We have, let me just see if we can get the maps up here. I don't see it working.
I'm so sorry.
Okay. We have a map for Ward Two, Precinct Three, and the map shows that the polling location, the new polling location is .4 miles from the old polling place. We've gone to the new polling place, I'm sorry.
No, no, please, I'm so sorry.
That's all right. And checked the ADA compliance standards there and made sure that that's all in line. The parking at the new polling place is equivalent pretty much to the old polling place, and it's a pretty well-known church. It's right on the, on the main drive there. The other polling place change is for 203, and that one is down Florida Avenue. So right now, the polling place is at the Jubilee Family Center on Florida Avenue and right down the street now at Brookville, Greater Brookville Church on the intersection of Winston Ridge Road. So that's within about, less than half, a little less than half a mile from that, from that original polling place. So both of them are within the one-mile radius that's required by the code. And we've also done the ADA check there to make sure that that polling place matches the requirements for, for compliance with assisting citizens to vote who have disabilities. That's pretty much all of my presentation. If you have any questions, I'll take them.
Thank you for your presentation. Sorry about the technical difficulty, Mr. Pence. It's all right. I know the one in my ward, you and I went there and checked it out, and West Lynchburg is very gracious to allow us to do that, and I really appreciate their volunteering. So I just wanted to thank them for that. And let's try to make sure all the citizens know where to show up on March 17th at West Lynchburg Baptist Church if they were formally at the city library. And it's really good that the library is going to be available as a, as a backup emergency for a lot of precincts, so that's great, too.
Yeah, that's our plan, and obviously, we're in conversation with the city to make sure that the renovation work that goes on there is, you know, that lines up with that, with that plan as well.
Thank you, Mr. Pence. Is there anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this project? These projects? Is there anyone who'd like to speak in opposition? Are there any voicemails from citizens? There's none? The public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion, please? Second. Is there any discussion? Please cast your vote.
Initiating the vote now. The motion passes, seven zero.
Next item on our agenda. Consideration of adopting an ordinance approving and approving the rezoning of 1600, 1602 McVeigh Road to allow the construction of a new home. Mr. Tom Martin.
Mayor, Vice Mayor, thank you for allowing me to be with you this evening. This petition does propose the rezoning of approximately one acre from R1 to R2 to allow for the construction of additional single-family home. The Planning Commission originally recommended denial of this petition when it was heard in January of this year because the request was for R3, which would have allowed duplexes, and the Planning Commission determined that that was not in compliance with the future land use map. As such, after that hearing, the petitioner changed their petition back to R2 to allow for single-family homes. As you can see on these two maps, the property is zoned R1, single-family, has been since 1978, and it is recommended for low-density residential uses on the city's future land use map. If approved, this rezoning would allow for slightly smaller lot sizes, 10,000 square foot lots. So that portion of land in the middle could be subdivided into a third lot and allow the construction of a single-family home. So with that, I'll be happy to answer any questions after the public here.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. Would a petitioner like to make a presentation?
Good evening, councilmembers. Amy Syte, Principal Engineer of AccuPoint Surveying and Design. We've been working with the property owner that currently owns both homes that are in existence on McVeigh. As Mr. Martin described, there is an excess of land where, if allowed with this smaller lot dimension, they would be able to add a third dwelling. We would like to keep this in, in the spirit of the neighborhood. The owners provided rendering as well, that it would be similar to the homes that exist. And we're just trying to really maximize the land that's kind of misconfigured now over the years. You know, as lots were, in, in the past, you would buy little slippers. And so this is kind of a way to maximize what, what land is there. The houses would all be connected to city water and sewer, so that allows the correct lot size for development. And I'm happy to answer any questions that you might have.
Thank you. If we have any questions, we'll call you back. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor? Is there anyone that would want to speak in opposition? No? Are there any voicemails?
There are none.
There's none? Public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion?
I move that we accept this?
Second.
Second. Please cast your vote. Is there any discussion from anybody else? Okay.
Initiating the vote now. The motion passes, six one.
Consideration of adopting resolution amending future land use map and adopting the ordinance approving the rezoning of 815 through 906 Wigginton Road to allow for the construction of the Village at West Point. Mr. Tom Martin will provide a summary of this request.
Good evening again, council. This item was presented to you at a business item briefing on February 25th by your city planner, Rachel Fraschison, who unfortunately could not be with us this evening. The purpose of the petition is to amend the future land use map and to rezone 53.33 acres on the southwestern, primarily on the southwestern side of Wigginton Road to allow the development for up to 750 residential units. This petition, the rezoning in the flume, was heard by the Planning Commission on February 12th, at which time, they did recommend to council approval of the petitions. So the subject properties are currently recommended for low and medium-density residential uses on the city's future land use map. The medium-density residential uses, which are 46.62 acres, are really for single-family homes and townhomes up to densities of 12 units per acre. The lighter yellow areas, which are low-density, are recommended for single-family homes up to four units per acre, and that's 6.91 acres. The properties are currently zoned R2, low to medium-density, I3, heavy industrial. And the largest portion, which is the R3 conditional, was rezoned in 2008 to allow for a 190-unit townhome development. That development never came to fruition. If these petitions are approved tonight, both the future land use map and the zoning map would change to high-density residential, allow the construction of the 750 units, which would really equate to about 14 units per acre. So the submitted concept plan, it indicates a mixture of condominiums, townhomes, has some really nice amenities shown, parks, nature trails, a future connection to the Peaks to Creeks Trail that will connect Peaks View Park and Ivy Creek Park. Also shows a clubhouse and a combination of public and private streets. So while community development supports homeownership opportunities, it's important to note impacts related to the development, which are primarily traffic concerns. To further orient you, the map on the screen right now shows the current proposed development, which is labeled as site, the area in yellow. It shows the current condition of Wigginton Road. This road is narrow, it lacks curb and gutter. At a maximum build-out, the traffic analysis indicates that the development would generate right around 4,923 daily trips on Wigginton Road, which is more than all of the traffic, daily trips on Wigginton Road now. The map also shows the 221 501 improvements that are proposed to be completed, I believe, in 2030. It shows two key intersections, which we'll talk about more in a minute, the Wigginton Road, Old Forest Road intersection. It shows the 501, or PFC Desmond, T. Doss Memorial Highway, southbound ramp to Wigginton Road. And this map also shows you some of the existing neighborhoods in that area north of the development. Neighborhoods like Boxwood, Bethel Park, Bethel Estates, and others, Citation Run. So what does the submitted traffic analysis tell us about the development? Well, the first thing it tells us in area four of that screen that turn lanes are needed into the development. The petitioner has indicated their willingness to construct those turn lanes. It'd be two entrances, so there'd be two turn lanes. And what my understanding is, is that those, that widening necessary and the curb and gutter, at least on the south side of Wigginton Road, would extend all the way to the southbound ramp. The other things that this, this map are showing us that are as important is intersection three, and you can see the image on the screen. That is the southbound ramp from the expressway, and also the intersection at Wigginton Road and Old Forest Road. What we know is that with the development, these intersections degrade to an unacceptable level of service, or at least what's unacceptable to city staff, without mitigating factors. And we'll talk about that, but that's essentially a traffic light at, a traffic signal at the southbound ramp and lengthening the turn lanes and signal timing at Wigginton Road, Old Forest. So, you know, I've, I've been at the city a while. I've, actually, today I was described as old and weathered. Might have been withered. Weathered? Okay. I prefer seasoned, but, yeah, salty. Okay. Point is, you know, I've, I've really helped navigate developers and, and our community through some fairly complex land use issues. And, and while the developer has submitted some voluntary proffers in an effort to mitigate the impacts of this development, this development is different than those that I've worked on in the past. It's different than what staff would normally comfortably recommend to council on approval, at least in its current state. So, you know, proffers, while the maximum number of units are indicated, the layout of the development's not proffered. So there's no assurances to council, if you approve this this evening, that those great amenities like the parks and the trail connections and all those things are actually going to be constructed. The maximum height of the structure is indicated, but there's nothing to indicate that the design or the materials that are going to be used. So essentially, what's being proposed to you this evening and asking you to adopt is a request to approve 750-unit residential development with no real assurances of what it's going to look like and how it's going to be laid out, because there's no proffer indicating that. So the remaining proffers are really related to the road improvements. And while they have improved, there's still timing concerns, and they also commit the city to funding. I've also not really been involved in any rezoning petitioners where the petitioner comes forward and does a traffic study and says, these are necessary road improvements. We're going to fund X percent, and city, you need to pay for the rest of it. It's just, we have, at least in my tenure, have not incentivized standalone residential development in the way that's being proposed to you this evening. So it's important for council to understand the level of funding the developer is requesting council to commit to this evening. So the, the recommended improvements, again, are the traffic signal at the southbound ramp and a lengthening and signal timing adjustments of turn lanes at Wigginton and Old Forest Road. Now, you see the totals there. The developer estimates for those improvements are 800,000. The city estimates are 2.8 million. The reason the city estimates are higher is we accounted for inflation on the traffic signal. But we also, our city engineering department used the Virginia Department of Transportation estimator tool for what would be required. So there's a gap there. So essentially, what you're being asked to commit to this evening, when you combine internal street reimbursements, which are estimated to be about 1.2 million, and that's something we do with any new city streets, there's an obligation being requested from council this evening of up to 3.4 million dollars. So staff's goal is, is always to move petitions forward to council in timely manner as required by the city code. And we have a timeline here that was shared with you in your packet. And in full disclosure, my staff made an error that resulted in the delay of this petition by one month. Normally, it would have came to you in February. Because of the error, my staff is before you now this evening. I own that. My staff owns that. Yet, over that time, I think we've been able to work with the petitioner to improve what's been submitted to council this, this, this evening. So really, if, if council's inclined to approve this petition, there's some really good reasons for council to do so. Yet, we would recommend that staff, that council really consider tabling this item and allow staff to work with the developer on a development agreement, a memorandum of understanding. of understanding, because these proffers, while they generate intent, they really don't lay out enough specifics. Who's responsible for the design? At what time are the improvements going to be put in? Who pays for it upfront? All of these things need to be worked out. We also need to make sure that it gets put into capital improvement program. We need to look at possibility of VDOT revenue sharing. So, we're asking table, council table, give us a month to sit down with the developer. In a project of 750 units in this area, it's important that we do it right. If this development is approved, we, we being the developer, the city, its citizens, the future residents, need to make sure that the traffic is going to work and are in place as needed. With that, thank you. I'm available to answer questions. You also have your city traffic engineer, Mr. Ryan Roberts, who probably knows more about those improvements than I, but I appreciate your time.
Thank you.
Hi, I have a quick question. Is it, am I allowed to ask a question before we open this to the public?
So, I think, I think we do the public hearing.
Yes.
It was, it was for you. Okay, wait, look, okay.
Yes, yes. Is there anyone who would like to speak in favor of this project?
Can you off the level of the mic?
We'll try it right here, and you let me know if we need to adjust the mic. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Dean, Deemer, council members, and city staff. My name is Greg Lester, and I'm a partner with Elevate Communities. I've been a developer for 25 years. My early work was in Bedford County, having done 850 mixed homes at West Crossing and Farmington, delivering some $400 million of taxable housing to the county. I joined Elevate Communities to begin working in the city. Recently, we completed a 107-unit townhome community known as Heritage Point that we built and sold in 18 months on Leesville Road. Currently, we are building 42 condos at Cornerstone. Elevate's goal is to build communities, not just homes to live in, but where families can thrive and afford the many benefits of homeownership, where friendships with neighbors can grow and develop. And to foster these community relationships, West Point will have amenities, including a pool and a clubhouse, and indoor pickleball courts, mini-pocket parks, dog parks, and nature trails. These amenities will be built. We are not foolish. We are selfish from a standpoint that we want to sell the units, so we are going to build the amenities, and they will be very nice. Real estate has always been about location, 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 and West Point is a grand slam on location. From its pristine location with not one single adjoining neighbor, and let me repeat, not one single adjoining neighbor, it is 65 acres on Wigginton Road and immediately adjacent to the 501 on-ramp Desmond T. Doss Highway. It has a 20-foot water main out front and newly constructed sewer lines, all gravity It is strategically located between two of Lynchburg's largest parks, Peaks View and Ivy Creek, and I think the trail will connect those two parks. West Point will provide a diverse mix of housing options and styles, sizes, and price points of condos, townhomes, and patio homes. All homes will be for sale. These homes will provide seniors the opportunity to downsize to maintenance-free condo homes, while selling the single-family homes that they were leaving to younger families who want and need the single-family home and yard. Hopefully, these younger families come with children and bring much-needed students back to the city's school system, reversing the decades-long decline in enrollment and the loss of state and federal dollars needed for the school's budget. West Point will be affordable and will enable young professionals the opportunity to buy and begin building equity versus continuing to rent. Lynchburg needs to reverse the current decline of homeownership, which has fallen to under 50%. Utilizing higher-density housing here at West Point consolidates development and reduces urban sprawl associated with traditional single-family homes. It also enables cost savings by reducing land costs, consolidating the utilities required, reducing roadways and associated stormwater needs. Density enables the developer a lower to build and deliver a lower-priced home. Without density, housing costs will continue to rise and remain out of reach for many. West Point, like both Cornerstone and Windhurst, will be a great addition to Lynchburg and become a dependable tax revenue source for the city upon, and upon completion in approximately 10 years, it could deliver real estate taxes in excess of $2 million, personal property tax of 700,000, and sales tax of 900,000, totaling nearly $3.7 million on an annual basis. So, the chart that was just shown was roughly that number. If it costs that, then the first year of full occupancy would pay off that 3.7 millions. How many of the city needs could be used, the city's needs could be met if this project is built and had an income stream of 3.7 million on an annual basis? Most importantly, West Point is one of the last remaining large developable parcels in the city. It will make a measurable impact on the city's critical housing shortage. The EDA has done a great job of recruiting, retaining, and expanding businesses here in Lynchburg. Now is the time to build homes for their employees. With Framatons, over 500 jobs coming, BWXT is hiring, Centra has a $600 million expansion, and the LUs continued growth, along with thousands of other businesses, Lynchburg will need many more homes to accommodate this growing workforce. The construction of 750 homes will create approximately 8,000 labor hours of jobs for each home constructed, adding additional revenue sources to the city. A comprehensive traffic study has been carried out by a third-party engineer, and it has confirmed that West Point's development will have a manageable impact on local roadways. There will likely be additional improvements to be made over time, and our company's project engineer, Trent Warner, will address the traffic analysis during the Q and A. He will also explain the major improvement that is coming to the 221 Old Forest Road, 501 North intersection. City staff has agreed that the traffic is manageable with our solutions, and it will largely be corrected before we are less than halfway built out. Our project will likely take 10 years, and the major traffic issue will be resolved by 2031. I'm asking for your approval tonight for this great community. Time is the essence, and we need to get started building homes. Thank you for your service to Lynchburg and time on this matter.
Thank you, sir. If we have any questions, we'll call you back. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Hi, my name is Jill Rufus. My husband and I, we run EXP Realty Team Rufus. Our office is located downtown. I can walk here, 1102 Commerce Street. We currently own nine properties in Lynchburg, and we love Lynchburg. We raised our kids in Lynchburg, right on Ford Avenue. I've lived here for 50 years of my life. I'm a Realtor, and I had the privilege of selling 145 homes last year totaling $42 million, and I'd just love to meet people move into Lynchburg, and upsizers, downsizers, et cetera. So, tonight, I wanted to let you know, I'm a member of the local Lynchburg Realtors Association, and I am the Realtor for Elevate Communities. You guys have an amazing opportunity here tonight, and as a Realtor, I can tell you that West Point's product types are exactly what we need. There are about 1,300 Realtors. We get calls for these types of homes more than any other product, and many times, we cannot accommodate these people looking for something 250 to 300,000 dollars. There's just not enough of them out there. One-level living for seniors and handicap needs, condos and patio homes meet these needs. Quality, affordable townhomes are in huge demand as well. You all have already heard about Heritage Point Townhomes on Leesville Road. Let me tell you, the citizens of Lynchburg were hungry for this type of product. We sold out in 18 months. 107 townhomes were gone in 18 months. If I had condos there, I would have sold 107 in the same one and a half years. There were so many first-time home buyers that bought over there, and it was a pleasure to work with them. There's some amazing first-time homebuyer grants, and to see these young people get these funds in, they could get in, they could walk in and close a lot of them with $1,000. That's all they had to bring, and it was just a pleasure to work with those young people. We will sell these West Point homes like hotcakes. I hope the sales information helps you understand how desperate your citizens are for new, affordable, maintenance-free homes. Many Realtors hope you will greenlight West Point so we can house Lynchburg. Thank you.
Anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Counsel, my name is Sue Stingle. I live in Ward Three, and I live in Cornerstone. I love Cornerstone. My husband and I downsized our Bedford County home from 5,000 square feet to a single-family home 10 years ago in Cornerstone. It's fabulous. It's one-story. It's our retirement home. I can get in and out in a wheelchair when the time comes, and I really support this new development. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Good evening, members of the city council. My name is Carter Leverett, and I'm in my final law school, my final year of law school here at Liberty University, thankfully. I've lived in Boonsboro with my family since we moved here in 2006. I've recently accepted a job with a local law firm with the plan to stay here in Lynchburg and start working with them after I take the bar in July. I'm very excited. Also got some other exciting news to share. I was recently engaged, and me and my fiancee are really looking forward to starting our life here in Lynchburg. But we do have one concern, and that concern is that even during this exciting time in our life, I'm concerned that we're not going to be able to find affordable, safe, and low-maintenance home in the Lynchburg slash Boonsboro area. Like I said, Ward One is where I've grown up. It's where all my friends and family are. It's where my parents live, and it's where I would like to start my life with my family. Lynchburg has too many places to rent and not enough places to own. We see apartment communities popping up on Gravesmill, Timberlake, Cornerstone. All of these places are for rent. None of them are to own. And all of the homes in my parents' current neighborhood over there on Mimosa in Boonsboro are 50-plus years old. These are homes that are selling for 300-plus thousand dollars, and this is before any renovation cost has even been taken into account. Homes can cost in excess of 100,000 dollars to renovate, and therefore, to even move into my parents' neighborhood, I would have to have 400,000 dollars to do so. I can assure you that after three years of illegal education and student loan debts for both my fiancee and Will, who's in school to be a PA, I cannot afford 400,000 dollars. So, if I wanted to live in the Boonsboro area, my only option is to rent. And then, what occurs? My future financial security is jeopardized. I won't be able to put equity into a property. I'll just have to rent if I want to live in the same neighborhood as my parents. And this doesn't even take into account the most costly effect of this, my time. If I were to have to take time to put heavy renovations into a home and to oversee these costs, my new career would suffer. This is not a suitable environment for young professionals seeking to live in Ward One. Thankfully, this community that is being offered here at West Point Village offers homes that are going to be new, are going to be under 300,000 dollars, and are going to offer me the opportunity to live just within seven minutes of the home I grew up in, to achieve the same American dream that my parents achieved, and to stay close to my family and friends, and to continue to live in Ward One, a place I have called home since 2006. This community will allow me to spend less, have more time on my hands, build equity and future financial security, and ultimately, it will allow me to achieve the American dream and call Lynchburg home. I respectfully request that the city council make the right decision and allow us to go forward. Thank you.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Good evening, mayor, members of city council. My name is Matt Holly. I'm the chief executive officer of the Home Builders Association Central Virginia. The developer is actually one of our members, and we're happy to have him there. Like you just heard from this young man, we have a thing in our area that's called the missing middle, and the missing middle is affordable housing. Coming off of our Home Builders Association for the state, they're telling us right now that we have 200,000 units right now that we're underserved and underbuilt, based on the need that's here, and there's over 300,000 housing units across the state that are needed for what we call affordable housing. And so, this is one thing that the developer is going to have for us, and it's also going to be in our city. The other thing, if you go across the state, our median cost for a brand-new house is 461,000, and obviously, that's the whole state, right? Average out. Lynchburg, Virginia, we're more in the, in the upper threes for new housing, new construction. And so, basically, what these guys are going to provide is a opportunity, just like this young man just spoke, for a place for he to raise his family, and it's a development in our city. I will say on behalf of 140 members of our local association, over 3,100 at our state association, which I serve on the board of directors there, and then part of our 140,000 national home builders, we would like to support this project, and ask that you do so also.
Thank you. Anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Hello again, Amy Syke, city resident for almost 26 years. So, it's interesting that I get to speak to you tonight as a, as a citizen, and as you know, I have a unique perspective and, and understand what is being proposed in great depth. I'm also one of the generators of many, many of those trips along Wigginton Road as I travel it, along with my, the other drivers in my house, so we probably account for 30 of those trips a day up and down that road, so I'm very familiar with the road. What I've seen over the years, and clearly, over many, many councils for all these years, I've been a petitioner for rezones, just here tonight. So, what I've seen, not only in this city but others, if you're not moving forward, you're falling behind. My children have gone through the city schools, and I've seen the volume of students decrease and decrease and decrease. So many people look at home ownership differently now. People don't necessarily want an acre of land to take care of on the weekends. They want experiences with their kids. They want to do travel ball. They want to go and see other parts of Virginia, hike, or play disc golf, or enjoy the parks. So, they maybe don't want to maintain a large home. It's a great place to start. I think he said the missing middle. That's, you know, such a need in this area. I also would say that having done many, many projects at the lake, there's an issue of NIMBY, and everybody wants to, the door to close behind them, and them to be the last one in, and like, okay, I'm here, I'm settled, nobody else can come in now. And so, I've seen that over and over again in, in other communities, and I would say that this piece of land is perfectly suited for a mixed type of development. I watched Windhurst when it first started, and so many naysayers were like, what are they doing? This is crazy. And, I mean, I dare say that a large majority of the city goes and walks there and enjoys all the commercial amenities and the parks, and, you know, I have friends in the retirement community there. So, then, you know, about 10 years later, Cornerstone came along, and it was the same thing. Oh, that is, that'll never fly. And now, the same thing is, it's become a vibrant part of the city. And so, these pockets have become known as attractions for people who are coming to the area. Fortunately, they're all in the city, and this is one of the last large tracts of land that we have to put forth a development that brings tax dollars, it brings families, it brings connectivity to parks. There was a concern raised about what the, what they would look like. They want to be sold, and if you look at the history of the developer, I think you'll find they would be a quality product. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, city council, citizens of Lynchburg.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, City Council, citizens of Lynchburg. My name is Kevin Foster. I'm a local general contractor, and I've been general contracting in the Lynchburg area for 35 years. I've had the opportunity to build over 1,000 new construction houses in the 35 years I've been in business. And I've been involved in great communities like Windhurst and Cornerstone with Mr. Burrell here, other communities like Sterling Park, Farmington, Forest Lakes, Lake Vista, and Great Oaks. I'm obviously in favor of the project because I'm the general contractor for the project, but I want to talk to you about some positive impacts from the West Point project. Quality, safety, affordability, jobs, and local. Let's see, quality first. This developer expects very high building standards. That's why I love working with elevated communities. We've had so many conversations on the job, sitting down on top of a footing and talking about how the footing works. He gets it. He wants to build quality homes. Heritage Point, like Jill mentioned, 107 homes that we got to construct. All of those homes sold out in 18 months. Why? Location was obviously a factor. Quality was a huge factor. Affordability was a factor. Let's talk about safety. Safety. When we built Heritage Point, we were there for 18 months. A lot of traffic is coming through there in 18 months. Hundreds of subcontractors, realtors, owners, because people are living there while we're working there. While we were there, we had absolutely zero incidents on the job as far as safety. As far as traffic, traffic coming in and out, you know, the accidents we had? Zero in 18 months. This developer gets it. He puts in, implements a life-safety track record. Let's talk about affordability. Why did Heritage Point sell out so quickly? Nearly six homes per month affordability. And that's what we're proposing tonight with the new project. Let's talk about jobs. West Point will employ 300 full-time jobs for nearly 10 years. That's a lot of workforce development for Lynchburg. That's a lot of jobs for Lynchburg. A few of Foster Construction work points wanted to come here tonight, and I would love to keep them employed for the next 10 years in Lynchburg. Let's talk about local. Local. My family's local. I was born, my wife was born, my two kids, and one of my two grandkids in Virginia Baptist Hospital. We're local. We're as local as it gets. Our suppliers are local, with caps. Our subcontractors are local. Our realtors, like Jill, are local. Our entire Elevate team is local. We are not an out-of-town developer. Nothing against them. We are Lynchburg. City Council members, the choice is yours. West Point will be one of Lynchburg's largest desirable housing communities, impacting hundreds of families that call Lynchburg home. Our planning commission is on board. Our Elevate team is ready to work with the city together, making this project a reality. Thank you for your leadership. Thank you for your commitment in serving our amazing city. God bless y'all.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak in favor?
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. As I look at this project, there's so many things that are wonderful about it. As Kevin Foster just mentioned, the team is local. So when you see the local element, they want to build them and sell them. You know, Mr. Martin had mentioned a minute ago about a document, a developer's agreement. The planning department, as you mentioned, pushed it off a month because of a few problems. The planning commission voted for it without a developer's agreement because this developer is a local developer. They're born here. Greg Lester's dad was in Normandy right after D-Day. The family has been here. They want to make products and want to make amenities that will sell. I look at this. I look at the tax revenue that is going to be generated. I look at the fact of these single-family homes that are going to be there, and I look at the fact of the entrances and egress. Now, when I look at these proffers, the one thing that's on there is I have never, I've been on, I was on council for 20 years and served on the planning commission before. I've never seen a proffer that says, "We're going to improve a road that is a mile and a half away from the development." This developer is going over and above, above and beyond what is needed. The only problems that I would see with this is traffic and Old Forest, or excuse me, Old Forest Road, 501, 221. But guess what? That's the city's doing, and the city has been talking about this for over 20 years. It happened before I was on council. Hopefully, it'll be approved and be finished fairly quickly. The traffic comes in there flowing so nicely. This is going to be something that you're all going to be very proud of. And as several people mentioned before, some of the other developments like Windhurst, and they get to say, and you'll be able to say, "I voted to approve this. I helped make the city better. I helped to make the city more affordable. I helped a local developer approve something where there hasn't been development in a lot of years." Most of this high-density development has been at Timberlake Road, Ward Three, Ward Four. This is a place where there hasn't been development. There's nobody that says, "Oh, this is not, this is in my backyard. You can't do it," because you own all the land there. And what a great development. I hope you guys approve this tonight. It's a fantastic development, and I look forward to your vote. Thank you.
Anyone else would like to speak in favor? Anyone would like to speak in opposition?
We do have a line outside, so I'll have staff pop outside to do a last call.
Yes.
She did just step outside. She's checking for in favor.
Is this in favor or opposition?
I'm sorry. I thought this was opposition.
We're doing just one last call.
They're checking outside real quick.
This is in favor? Oh.
You're speaking in favor?
Ms. Fuentes, was there a last call for in favor? Anybody outside? Okay, no more in favor.
So you can return.
Hello, good evening. My name is Richard Oldham. I live on Wigginton, but I've also worked on Wigginton for almost 10 years. And I was in the process of trying to move my dental office about four doors up Wigginton Road from my old location. So I went through the technical review committee process of rezoning a property that's now dwell real estate. It was formerly the FOP, Fraternal Order of Police Building. So I've been through that process. And it was rigorous, and had to do a traffic study and all of these things in order to take what would have been about four to eight cars and just move them down the road about four doors. And City Council was great. I really appreciate the support. But there was a fair amount of skepticism. Had to do a pretty deep dive investigating what all would be required to move my same existing group of patients down the door, again, like about four addresses. So at the end of that, it was pretty involved, and I said, "It really wasn't feasible, just given what was required in order for me to get the property moved." But nonetheless, we got the rezoning done successfully. So my request would be that if we are now talking about the difference between, say, seven cars to 700 units of housing, that we would apply that same measuring stick, that we'd be equally skeptical in investigating what all would be required and how that would impact the community, given that we're talking about a much larger scope of work. But maybe the more important reason is about August the 23, I was on my way to work. So I was coming down Wigginton Road southbound, taking a left to get on 501. So stone's throw, you could see that intersection from where the housing development is currently being planned to be developed, and I got T-boned, totaled my car, and had a, pretty much a life-altering accident that affected my ability to work. So I don't really mean to make an emotional argument, but just ask respectfully that we could look as deeply into this issue as we did when I was moving a dental practice, that if we're going to add 700 units of housing, because there is a human cost to it. And that's it. Thank you very much.
Anyone else who would like to speak in opposition?
Good evening, everyone. Appreciate it. First, I'd like to thank Vice Mayor Timmer and Greg also for showing me the property and doing a lockdown so I could be informed myself. Again, my name is Brian Hybuck. I am a resident Lynchburg, live off of Wigginton Road. I also am not naive of the housing issue, and I'm not anti-development. My fundamental request is for the council to send us back to the planning committee. I share a lot of the same comments that were already shared. I think there's a lot that needs to be vetted out, and my reasons for the request are as follows. We've talked about the traffic issue ad nauseam. Fundamentally, the improvements on 221 and 501 and Old Forest Road have been discussed for many, many years. It's still not fully designed. It's still not funded. What I read in the plan is it's not going to be designed, finished until '28, finished construction in 2030. That's two years. That project is massive. Two years is not credible. And so I think the timing of when this development happens and when that infrastructure is ready is completely mismatched, and there's a gap. And I think the planning committee can help fill those gaps in for everybody. Water. I live off Wigginton Road. My water is adequate, but just adding 700 homes is going, 700 homes has not been investigated. There's been no discussion about it. There's no idea what happens if the water pressures suddenly fall off and what the possible mitigation options are. I would like to have some kind of information about what that means and what risks that poses to everyone else downstream of this development. The proffers that have been discussed on 750 units is commendable. I appreciate at least there's some kind of a cap, but the mix doesn't guarantee that there's any patio homes. You can have only condos and only townhomes built there. And I think for the, you know, if we're serious about the older community, I think there needs to be a better proposition of a split and a guarantee of some kind of a split, understanding that the sales, if they're so simple, we should be more amenable to have a more uniform split across the different housing types. The build-to-sell proper, that is, it's positive. It sounds great, but I see no real mechanism that would prevent direct sale to a third-party or some kind of rental company because there's no guarantees on materials. There's no guarantees on price points. The proposal's own wording says that the condominiums will look like apartments. Okay, I understand the nature of a condominium can look like an apartment, but there is no proper that guarantees the materials and the quality such that a rental situation doesn't manifest. And I think most of the population...
Sir, your time is up.
There you go.
Thank you.
Thanks.
Anyone else would like to speak in opposition? Anyone speaking in opposition, please get in line so y'all keep coming, please.
Hi there. Hi, Council. My name is Trish Ceruley. I live in O2, in one of the neighborhoods along Wigginton Road. And we are, again, you know, I recognize I'm an advocate for land conservation, but also equitable housing opportunities. So I am certainly not anti-development, especially making smart choices for land use. I would like to see more green space in the development plans because we already have problems with bear and way too many deer in that area encroaching on our neighborhoods as well. So I wanted to mention that, to have more thought for wildlife there, bears, that will be impacted not only by this subdivision, but also the over 200 acres that are currently EDA that I imagine will be developed soon after as well, that the RFP that was out for. All of that is adjacent and relevant to this conversation. The major impact that I think a lot of us are opposed to is, like we've said, the traffic impact. Wigginton is a two-lane road. It's dangerous with blind curves, and it creates backups in the areas right there at Old Forest where Wigginton meets and where 501 meets. I know all of this is in the traffic study, but unless you drive that every single day for all of your ways to get around town, you don't recognize the massive backups that are there already with what we have. So increasing by this amount of housing will be a huge impact for our daily lives. I also have, I mean Bedford County residents will be impacted by this. Not only the neighborhoods right there on Wigginton Road, but people who choose because of this traffic nightmare that's going to happen to go the other direction and then take a left on Hawkins Mill and then go through Lake Vista. All of those residents are going to be impacted by this as well if we don't get the infrastructure straight first. So thank you for listening and appreciate the time.
Good evening, City Council. My name is Stephen Despens. I'm also a resident in Wigginton. We specifically live in the Foxwood community. My wife and I moved here about three years ago. I'm going to be honest. I'm originally from Northern Virginia, and I can tell you, if you're not familiar, the nightmares that have occurred in Northern Virginia and the amount of traffic that has come. I can speak for myself that my wife and I specifically moved down to Lynchburg for the sole reason that we love the Blue Ridge area. We love the Roanoke area. We wanted to get away from these things, this low-cost housing, the traffic, et cetera. As my other people have already spoken about, the main issue I specifically have with this proposal is the traffic. Again, you guys might have done these traffic studies, but unless you've actually gotten up at 7:00 in the morning and made your way on 501 to Old Forest, you will know that it will back up all the way to where Peaks View Hospital sits. It looks great to consider putting maybe a traffic light right there to maybe prevent an accident here and there, but that's not going to solve the traffic that already occurs. And you're thinking about adding 700 new homes. That's going to probably bring in at least 1,200, maybe 1,000 to 1,200 people. That's a lot more cars on the road. That also means that probably some of those cars will involve adolescents, so fairly new drivers. And with the winding roads, that can also lead to more accidents. I really hope you guys consider voting against this. Again, I am not against low-level housing, and I do, for my one person that spoke here that cannot afford, you know, these homes, I do feel for them. But part of the people that live in Wigginton, the homes that we live in, we wanted to get away from this traffic. And I think I can speak for most of us that we love the privacy, and we would like to keep it that way. And I really hope that you guys consider voting against this. I really hope. Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for the opportunity to be heard. My name is Mike Colliato. I've been a resident in the Bethel Park development for over 19 years. I also want to extend a thank you for the opportunity to have met in advance of this meeting with Mr. Langley and Councilwoman Timmer, who were able to better educate me on the proposal. But I do respectfully ask that you not approve the proposal to rezone to R4. For the record, I am not a NIMBY person. I'm a pragmatic person. And so when I hear an argument in previous discussions of, "Let's not set a precedent for voting down or not approving a development," that's not pragmatic to me. Every one of these, you know, should not just be rubber stamped, but rather should be looked at on a case-by-case basis because they're nuanced. And Wigginton Road, that area, if you've been out there, is definitely an area that I don't think is going to, and I'm not a transportation engineer, that's not going to be able to sustain and handle the traffic. So for me, my greatest concern is not traffic, but rather a different concern is safety. You look at the interchange there. If you're coming from the Hawkins Mill area, you're on a downward slope. You're accelerating. I do realize and respect that the development plan includes straightening some of those curves so they're not quite as treacherous as they are. But again, that interchange is always challenging. And so I can't imagine sending 750, double that, triple that, new traffic in that area into that area. And I understand the studies, right? I understand and have heard that over four years, there've only been four accidents. Fender benders classified as minor incidents. But I don't think that numbers always tell the But I don't think that numbers always tell the full story. And in this particular case, it doesn't tell the story of the number of instances of close calls. And all of that traffic coming on, you know, the ingress, egress onto Wigginton Road, you've got the veterinary practice there, you've got some businesses next to that, townhomes across the street from that, and then of course, the interchange with the bypass. Without, you know, with that new, with the traffic, and again, the added traffic, particularly if this is approved, it is literally doubling or tripling the amount of traffic compared to what was originally proposed. I really do fear for the safety, and I'm not exactly clear that commissioning a study later after the development has already taken place is really the answer to understand that it's kind of like, you know, getting pregnant and then figuring out whether or not you can afford it. So I thank you for your attention to this and your consideration.
Thank you.
Good night.
My name is Cynthia Singh. I live just a short distance down Wigginton Road from the proposed development in the Boxwood subdivision. We've lived there 20 years and in the city for 46-plus years. I, like others, am not opposed to development of this property. I question the high-density aspect of it and if that is indeed what the market needs and wants. I certainly understand the need for this mid-price point, but maybe we should look at research to see, you know, what exactly the buyers want, other than the anecdotal evidence that we've heard tonight. I also understand the need to increase our tax base and that this is a great project to do that, so big positive there. But my biggest concern, like so many others that have spoken tonight, is the traffic concern. And not just where Wigginton feeds into Old Forest Road, but the big snafu is where 501 feeds into Old Forest Road. And the project where the city will be upgrading that, that whole interchange, adding a new bridge flyover over Old Forest Road, will constrict traffic, there'll be reduced traffic flow during that construction process. And the timeline for this project will be adding additional trips, up to 5,000 car trips a day at full buildout during the time when we already have reduced traffic flow through that area in construction. So that's a very big concern. No one else has mentioned tonight, though, that in addition to West Point, the EDA has just put out a, well, I guess it's closed now, but has a PDF looking for developers for their 164-acre property that's adjacent to this property fronting Wigginton Road. What is that going to do to the traffic? We don't know. So, we don't know how that project will be developed and the timeline for it, the number of units, but it's 164 acres, it's going to be big. So, I would urge you to study three things. Is high-density in this area really needed? The timeline for, to understand how that EDA project is going to impact us and perhaps... Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition?
Thank you. My name is Jason Kaliva. I live on Wigginton Road, and I am representing 200, at least 266 residents of Wigginton Road who have signed on to this petition in opposition of this development. I believe I get five minutes to speak because I speak for a group.
You represent a group of 200 petitioners?
Thank you. I was here at the City Planning Commission meeting as well, and the city planner recommended against this development. Now, at that meeting, the developers made an emotional plea for the need of additional housing in the city of Lynchburg, and I am not sure if that is true or untrue. They also talked about, however, they did say that the starting price of a three-bedroom condo would be at least 300 grand. Now, the median home price in the city of Lynchburg, the sales price, is between 248 and $268,000. The median income in the city of Lynchburg is $62,000 per year. If we consider a 20% down payment and the current interest rates, and I estimate a HOH fee of $250 a month, which is potentially a low estimate, but let's go with it, that is a monthly principal interest taxes, insurance, and homeowner's fee of $2,050 per month. That is over 40% of the gross income needed to finance a home in most cases. So I question if this is actually affordable housing. Now, I don't disagree that Lynchburg needs more housing and needs more affordable housing, and our group is not opposed to developing this piece of property. However, we are opposed to the current rezoning of the property that is being proposed. You've probably heard about the traffic concerns, right? You've probably heard about the safety concerns. Wigginton Road is a narrow road, there's no shoulders, there's no sidewalks, it's currently unsafe for a pedestrian to walk on the road if two cars are coming in the same direction because in often cases, you are not able to get off the road. It's unsafe for cyclists. If we are going to more than double the amount of trips on Wigginton Road, then it will be unsafe for schoolchildren waiting for the bus. As I mentioned, we're not against development, but I do have some questions for you all. I hope you'll entertain me by raising your hand to answer these questions. Who do you think is better equipped to make decisions regarding the safety and welfare in their community? The residents of that community or the government and corporations? Please raise your hand if you think it's the residents of that community. One person thinks it's the resident, two people. Anyone else think it's the residents of the community? So you all, the rest of you, think government and corporations should be responsible for making decisions impacting the community and not the people who live there? Now, my next question is in regards to who you represent. Mr. and Ms. Jones, right there. I see that you have accepted $7,000 at least in campaign contributions from the Langleys. Mr. Deemer, $2,000. Mrs. Reed, $8,000. Ms. Timmer, $6,000. And Mr. Taylor, $8,000. Is this incorrect? Now, I ask you my second question. Who do you all represent? The residents of Lynchburg that are going to be impacted by this development or the corporations who finance your campaigns? Please raise your hand if you believe it is the residents of Lynchburg that you represent. One, two, three. Great. Four. Great. Raise your hand if you think it's the corporations that finance your campaign that you should represent.
Yeah, raise your hand.
Excuse me?
You have to raise it higher so we can see.
I just want to make it clear that our rules of council do not allow us to interact with you and your questions, so I'm going to follow our rules and I hope the rest of my colleagues will as well. I just want to make clear, we're not responding to your questions because we disagree with your questions. We have rules and we're trying to adhere to them, so.
I apologize, I'm not familiar with the rules.
Calling us out individually is a gray area as well.
Oh, is he on the times?
Thank you. Anyways, I think I've made a point that this is probably not exactly affordable housing as the developers have pitched it. My fellow residents have made a point concerning the safety concerns that would be occurring should this residential development be rezoned to 750 units, and you've probably heard about the traffic ad nauseam. So I hope that you will take all of this into consideration when making your decision. Thank you.
Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in favor? Opposition, opposition, I'm sorry.
For timing purposes, I represent a group of neighbors on Two Creek Drive off of Wigginton Road, so I'd ask for five minutes. Good evening, council. My name is John Romano. I'm a resident of the city of Lynchburg. It's with great pause that I'm here tonight, I really didn't want to have to speak to this publicly, but I have a group of elderly neighbors that were concerned about making this meeting and quite frankly, don't engage in public speaking quite as much as I do. So here I am. I'm against this as it's proposed, I'm not against development, and I'm certainly not a fool. This land is going to be developed based on where it is, how it lays, and the fact that our city's growing. The Planning Commission, the city planner, opposed it as it's designed, and you can go back and watch that, take notes, I'm not going to recap on that, that speaks for itself. The traffic studies, the traffic studies speak for themselves. Just the other day, somebody ran the red light over in the island at 501 and Old Forest Road. City put it up really quickly, but that tells you we're having, we're having problems there. And if you go back and read the original traffic study for that intersection, it speaks volumes to where we are. It needs to be, shovels need to be in the ground first, dirt needs to be broken so we know it's going to happen before we start adding high-density development, or quite honestly, any development at this point at that area of Wigginton Road. The existing plan, we've heard a lot of proffers, we have proffers from the builder. I went out and toured the property with one of the city council members who represents my district or my ward, I guess is correct, and met the developer. He was very accommodating, he was very professional, and he didn't shy away from questions. My concern is, is I had more questions when I left there than I had before I got there. And I think so did the member of city council. That's not a bad thing, we need to make an informed, educated decision. We got to get this right because once it's built, once you rezone it, you can't take it back. So, in speaking to that, there's a lot of questions that aren't answered. Who's going to buy these? Can they rent them? What happens if a dad buys it for their student to come here to college as a young professional if they're planning to stay, but they get a job out of town and now they've got this and they can't sell it? What are they going to do? They're going to rent it. Can you stop that? Who's going to enforce it? These are questions that we need to have answers to. What are the demands on city services? Trash, sewer, water meter reading, fire, all these different things. Who's going to pay for that? We got a 10-year estimated bill. Can anyone in this room predict in 10 years where the economy's going to be, if we're going to hit a recession, if the brakes are going to be slammed on this? Good questions and something that I'll ask you to consider. Housing needs. We've heard an association here tonight that they're a paid member of come and speak on behalf of the shortage. But you have Fleetwood being developed with two $300,000, $400,000 homes that are selling as fast as they can build it, and that's in the city, and that's in the same price range that this is going to be built. So I don't think anyone can argue that we have a shortage of housing, but we have a difference of opinion of who wants to live in the city and what they want to buy. And that's an individual choice, not one that council needs to take up. But make no mistake, this is high-density for profit, and the reason it's high-density and they want that is because they can make more profit. And if you look at what they paid for the land, what the developer told me out of their own mouth, "We paid enough for this land, we need to get a return on our investment." That doesn't sound like somebody that's trying to do maybe what's in everyone's best interest as it's designed. We've got a petition with 260 of your constituents. I asked the gentleman that had that petition circulated, do they live in the city? Most do, some live in Woods on Wigginton, but they are all in that area. That's a lot of voters, and that's a lot of people that know hopefully better than any of us where they live and what they like and what they don't like. I hope you would take that into consideration. In closing, I want to ask you to vote against this. I don't think we have enough answers, I think we have too many questions. And if we vote no tonight, it doesn't mean they can't resubmit. The developer told me himself that would probably be what they would do. So a no tonight is not a no forever. But a no tonight is, let's get this right, because we've only got one chance at it. If you won't consider voting no tonight, then I'd ask you to table it indefinitely if the rules of council allow that. Until we can get some of these answers, no. Ms. Timber has a lot of questions that I posed to her or just in having a conversation with the developer that came up when we met, and she could inform you through the proper channels of what some of those unanswered questions are. So I'll close with this. Are you going to allow a developer to choose profit over the will of the majority of your constituents? There was not 260-something people here speaking in favor of this tonight. And a lot of the people, what I could hear out there, because it was noisy, weren't necessarily individuals, they were association members or groups or this or that. Sure, there's some in favor, and that's what makes this country great. But once this is rezoned, and once it's built, you can't go back. So let's hit the brakes. I'd ask you to vote against it and ask them to resubmit a plan. If they want to make this a retirement community, if they want to make this appealing to retirement people, then they need to tone it down and they need to design it for that. Because right now, we got townhomes, we got apartments, and we got patio homes, and the developer told me himself, we don't know what we're going to build. It depends on what the market wants. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who'd like to speak in opposition?
Good afternoon, everyone. My name is Cassandra Taylor. I'm not a developer, I'm not a Realtor, I'm not an architect, but I am a resident, I live in the Boxwood subdivision, and I've lived in that subdivision since 2000. So I do know that road, Wigginton Road. 750 units, that's going to be at least 750 cars on that road. You can double that because most people who buy houses is a two-income household, and so they will have at least two cars, maybe three. All of the subdivisions on Wigginton Road, there's only one way into the subdivision, one way out. So everything is going to empty back onto Wigginton Road. So it just, you know, I have two, I had two children that grew up in that subdivision, and you know, when they were learning to drive, when they first started driving by themselves, my first word was, "Be careful getting out on Wigginton Road because it's windy and there are blind spots." So the traffic pattern is really a big deal, and widening the road at the end of the intersection of Wigginton and Old Forest, widening that area there where you can either take a right or a left, that's not going to handle the traffic. Trying to get out of that road, over the last 24, almost 25 years, traffic backs up in the morning, trying to get back to Wigginton Road in the afternoon, that intersection of Old Forest and 221 is a nightmare, even though they've widened that, the turn signal where the Enterprise Car dealership is. It is a nightmare trying to get back on Wigginton Road. So I would ask you to reconsider. I'm not against development, I'm not against the city making money through taxes, but that just isn't the right spot. The other subdivisions that the developers were talking about, Windhurst and things like that, the road structure was adequate, and it was already pretty much in place, they just put the housing there. The road structure off of Wigginton Road is not going to support that, it just isn't going to, and it's just going to be a nightmare. For those of you who've not traveled that road, get up like the other gentleman said in the morning, or come in the evening, and see what the traffic patterns are, you'll see it's not going to be adequate. So I ask you to reconsider that. Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Abby. I am a high school senior at EC Glass, and I have lived on Wigginton Road my entire life. I wasn't planning on speaking to you all today, but after hearing the rest of the speakers, I feel like my points could contribute something. I know you have already heard eight people express their concerns on traffic. I know you have already heard eight people express their concerns on traffic, but let me be the ninth. Since I haven't prepared, please excuse my lack of eye contact. Anyone driving at, anyone driving on that road after dark knows how geographically bumpy, poorly lit, endlessly winding, and full of deer it is. We have been lucky enough to have little to no traffic congestion at all, but building new homes would jeopardize that and make the road even more dangerous to drive on. There have been countless times where I've almost hit a deer on my way home, and yes, I've only been driving for a year and a half, but I might not be such a steering whiz. But these new homeowners are going to be raising their own children who will someday have to face that commute every day for school and, for school and extracurriculars as well. This danger will impact them as well. I also want to point out that it will also heavily, heavily impact traffic by the Old Forest Road and Lakeside Drive intersection, namely the entrance to get onto the Desmond T. Doss Memorial Expressway. At the end of each day, around 5:00 to, 5:00 to 5:30, and the beginning around 7:30 a.m., traffic already reaches a standstill. It takes me an agonizing amount of time to get to home or to school because of this waiting. These cars will be trying to get back to their houses on Wigginton Road. I completely understand the frustration of wanting to buy a home and not rent one, but such efforts to urbanize a residential area would be better done elsewhere, not on Wigginton Road. I really hope you consider all traffic patterns and solutions to them before development begins. There have been 200 people that have signed a petition. Please ensure that it is safe and then start the project. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who would like to speak in opposition to this project?
Mr. Mayor, will do you just one more last call out in the hallway?
There are none.
Okay. Yeah, one more last call. Okay, no more speakers outside.
No more speakers? Alicia, are there any votes mailed from citizens?
There are none.
There's none? Would the petitioner like to make a rebuttal? You have five minutes to make your rebuttal, sir.
Give me just one second, I promise.
Okay.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, council members. My name is Trent Warner. I'm with the development team Elevate. Appreciate standing in front of you. Five minutes is a lot. I wrote down as many as I could here to respond. And as you guys know, traffic is the issue, and we knew it was before we started. We've done a lot of research and a lot of looking at this property and the layout. And much of what Mr. Martin said earlier, I also have discussion items for that, and I'm very looking forward to having that discussion with you with your questions after this rebuttal time. Mr. Oldham mentioned about his rezoning. I just so happen to know part of that because I helped along that way. Mr. Oldham also had some sewer issues that he had with that piece of property that we do not. We're lucky to have VRWA put their sewer line on our property. I also sympathize that he had an accident. We did the research on that, too. One of the intersections that we're talking about did have where he was talking about, it is one per year. And that's unfortunate, but there were no deaths or fatalities, just in case. I wanted, I wanted to bring that up. I'm glad he made it through there, too, and was able to be here tonight. And I'm going to try to shotgun these as best I can. Brian Hibot, and I'm going to butcher these names because I was trying to write them, but the improvements, and a lot of people don't know about the 501 and 221 intersection. In fact, we didn't even really know until we got into just investigating it because we had found out that there's a new engineer on board, and I just wanted to know what that timeline was. And I'll show that up here in a minute when we get to rebut about how their timeline works with our timeline, and it's brilliant. It couldn't have worked better for us, and I hope you guys are able to sit in and see some of that during the rebuttal. The water line, there was an issue. Just to have, give you an idea, that's a 20-inch line. That's the biggest line I've ever connected to. I believe Greenview Drive was a 12-inch line, and it, and it gave water to all of Greenview Drive, which is bigger than what we are. So we're not going to have an issue there. We have the infrastructure. And the, the issue about rentals, we think we nailed that. We think we're the first people that proffered for-sale units and a mix. So it's a little bit different than what Tom is used to, but we think it's the way to go. Gives it the most flexibility, and it doesn't, it gives the for-sale issue, and I'll describe a little bit about that. To get the worry that people have about these becoming rental units, it's not what's going to happen. First off, it can't happen because we proffered. In fact, I'll just go into it now. The whole idea is a rental unit, when you look at an apartment building, those units are a certain value. Our values are more like home values. They're more expensive. So you would be an idiot to buy a bunch of buildings and turn them into rentals. First off, you couldn't. We've got for-sale units. But if you made those rentals, the cost of those and the taxes that you have to pay for the value of that house would put you out of the rental market. What's happening right now in Lynchburg is we are saturated with rentals. We won't have that problem on our site. That's why we proffered for-sale. We knew that that might be a fear, so we've proffered that out. A traffic study, and let me give you an idea about the traffic study. I've worked with the engineer for their, for, did the study for us for 25 years. And the reason we use him is in 25 years, he and I have never been to court on any of my projects. I use him because it's safe. Mr. Foster talked about how safe Heritage Point was. We really do care about that. And I do hear the concerns about the ADT, the, sorry, the daily traffic that's on the road. That traffic is very small. If you go out there, you'll look. I know it's not to them, but compared to other roads in the city that have had development put on them, even after we add our traffic, it's not nowhere near what other people in the city have had to deal with. Mr. Mike Leoto, sorry again if I butcher it. I do believe in that about the safety. If you try to walk Wigginton Road right now, it, it would be an issue. When we widen our Wigginton Road, it's about 900 feet all the way across that we have to build for two left turn lanes, that section will have a brand-new sidewalk. We want it for our own residents as well. So that section of Wigginton Road is going to be highly improved, and we haven't talked about what else can happen on Wigginton Road because of future development around us, but we will. And I think, oh. So part of what we wanted to also discuss is saturation of market. We haven't talked about that. We're building 75 a year. That's what our model looks like. We just finished building 108 units in a year.
Your deal's round, old gentleman.
Yeah, I'm sorry.
Thank you.
But that's why we're making it a 10-year project. And I really want to get the EC student. That was a beautiful speech you gave. That was pretty tough for a high school girl to do. Thank you.
Public, public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion on the future? Yes, sir.
Denial?
Do I have a second?
I'll second that.
You want to speak to your second? Speak to your first.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. First, I got to commend everyone for participating, and one, staff, Alicia, your team, thank you so much for facilitating that. I know it's a lot. Thank you to the residents, developer, just everyone for making this really easy. So first and foremost. A couple of observations. So there's a lot here. I'll try to unpack where I'm coming from in the most succinct way I can. I'm also in this industry, and I find it interesting that the $300,000 mark is tossed out when over the last, since, since September, 79 townhomes have sold in the city of Lynchburg. From September 10th to December 9th, the average, the median cost of that sale was $272,500. From December 10th to today, it was $263,500. But then I shrunk the numbers just even more. I wanted explicitly three-bed, two-baths because that's what we've been hearing is what's going to be designed and put forward. The first date range, those three months, it was $215,000. The second date range was $256,700. So unless we're going to see a major spike in real estate, we're talking about selling homes under the guise that it's more affordable housing when the data clearly shows that there's serious markup here. It's an issue in my mind. I have a very hard time getting behind a project when a petition of 266 neighbors are saying they're opposed. Neighbor after neighbor, business owner, business owner, business owner, high school student. And I mean this with, with respect. The only folks who I heard, outside of maybe one engineer, the only folks I heard who were speaking in favor were those who were associated with the project or making a dollar behind it. There's nothing wrong with that, but it is an observation I made. There's the financial component behind, trying to remember the specifics, but long story short, hey, we build this city, you backfill dollars with infrastructure. I think it's a neat concept. I don't necessarily like being, I use this term softly, I'm not saying they're forcing us to make the investment, but there's the expectation. I'm not sure how that would work out. But I would say this, this, this is my main, my most important piece of this. As someone who also lives in this space, no client of mine would ever work, walk into a contract where the, where the terms of that contract could change at any time and the, my client not be able to do something about it. That's what is on the table right here, and that right there is a non-starter. So there's a lot of other issues associated with this, but in concept, that's where I'm coming from. I'll conclude my comments by saying this. If there's any concern, at least with my good colleague, Ms. Reed, about being able to vote on this independently, given the relationships that have been deteriorated, at least with some within these circles, I guarantee you, take my word for it, she can vote on this with a clear conscience.
So, a couple of things. One is, based on some of the things that were revealed tonight, I, I do know the Langley family, I do know the Rufuses, I'm good friends with Jill and Jimmy, their sons, I know Carter. All are great people, okay? So I can speak objectively to this based on the facts and concerns that we heard tonight, okay? I'm going to take the relationships. I know Mr. Lester. All great people. So what I'm about to say is based on what we heard from those who we represent tonight, okay? I think it was a great point and an important one that was made by the gentleman that brought up the petitions. I, as an at-large representative, represent the 80,000 people in the city. As a good builder, developer, realtor, it is you represent the desires of your clients, Mr. Foster, and you listen to the needs of those and desires of your, of your clients as a builder, as a realtor. Tonight, we heard from our clients, actually from our bosses. And they spoke loud and clear about their concerns. Now, I was glad to hear that it sounds like Mr. Langley said that if this was denied tonight, that he would come back. So objectively, listening to the concerns of my, of my, of our citizens, of constituents that we represent, I represent specifically, there was a lot of things that troubled me. Obviously, the, the traffic concerns we've had, we've turned down in the last two years that I've been, plus that we've been on council, we've said no to projects that had minor increases in traffic. And we're talking about doubling the traffic flow on this road. We, I don't recall, and correct me if I'm wrong, that we've approved or even been asked to spend $2.8 million of our money on a project that a developer has brought before us. So I'm shocked that we would consider it regardless of how far away the development is from the road. It's, to ask us to spend that money is, is kind of shocking. The fact that Mr. Martin, our city planner, had such concerns, I think needs to be considered. He made some great points that he wants to be able to work with the developer and on coming to a place where he feels comfortable with the concerns. I have no problem with that. I think that's a fair thing to want to do. The fact that three of our speakers in opposition actually met with the developer and the Ward One representative and still weren't happy, still had concerns. So they, they met, went onsite, asked questions, and walked away, still saying not comfortable with this. Those are concerning things to me. It's not affordable housing, so I think that's a really, not, not a wise choice of words to try to use to hide behind because it's not for the people that actually really look for affordable housing, are, are low-income and, and people that struggle with poverty issues. That's not a phrase we should throw around. It's lower-cost housing than some of the higher-cost housing in Ward One, but it's not, it's not affordable housing. It's for, for what we use that term for. I think it's nicely priced housing for what it's probably going to be and the quality of product that I, I know that Mr. Langley designs. I think it'll be a good value. I just think that there were a lot of concerns brought forth tonight that I think, I believe you can address and come back at another time with, with a better, a better answer. So that's my objective, just listening to the concerns, thought behind why I think I can't support it right now, listening to the people that I represent, and I have to listen to them.
Ms. Timber?
I really appreciate it, and I really appreciate the comments made tonight and the meetings that I've been able to have in this process and the discussions. Some of the Facebook messages and emails are, have slipped through the cracks, and I'm still following up and having those discussions. So I appreciate it because I know there's a lot of attention and a lot of concern and questions about the nature of this project. And I'd love to call back some individuals for questions, if I may, because there has been a lot of key terms thrown around that I believe need to be clarified and need to be understood by the body as a whole and to the overall nature of the discussion. Ms. Reed spoke to affordable housing. Mr. or Dr. Wilder and I serve on the CDAC committee together, and the definition of that term is, is very specific in how it's applied in the housing market and how that's understood, and it really has to do with relationship to income. And so sometimes there are concerns about, is this affordable housing in the sense of Section 8, or is this meeting our need for affordable housing in the sense of Section 8? And it's being misunderstood because we're using key terms. Even some of the zoning language gets very confusing when we talk about medium density and, and low density. And I tell you what, I've been on the treadmill, learning what these things mean and, and nailing it down over the past couple of days. And so I'd love to be able to call back Mr. Tom Martin to, to ask some questions, as well as Mr. Trent Warner and, and possibly some others, to go through these terms and have the discussion that I believe is important to have in the open. that I believe is important to have in the open.
You first?
Yeah, yeah, you first, Tom. Oh, sorry, Mr. Martin?
I'll stand beside Trent.
All right, all right.
Okay, yes, ma'am.
Thank you. So I wanted to drill into the numbers of understanding, because I've gone on so many tours over the past couple of days, and so could we put the picture on the board of the property parcels and how they're broken out? Thank you. And I believe the Wiggington, it's hard to tell, I'm getting used to these maps, but Wiggington, you can see cuts through, and then it goes on to Desmond Doss with the, kind of a clover, but it's not a clover, it's a half clover. So apparently not a lucky one, as I'm hearing with all the traffic. Yeah, Tulley. So my understanding is we have the dark yellow section, which is currently zoned R3C. Is that correct, Mr. Martin?
So you've got two maps on the screen.
Yep.
The map on the left of the screen is the future land use map.
Okay.
That was adopted as far as City Comprehensive Plan, amended over time. That's how the city would envision that area developing at the time it was adopted. The map on the right-hand side of the screen is the existing zone. And so on the left, you've got medium-density residential, which is single-family homes and duplexes or townhomes up to 12 units per acre. And you've got low-density residential, which is single-family homes up to four units per acre. And then on your right, you've got the existing zoning, majority of which is R3 conditional, which was done to allow the 190 townhomes back in 2008.
Okay, and that conditional use permit has expired, so...
So that's a very good point. It was rezoned back in 2008. I'm so sorry, I'm so sorry. It was rezoned back in 2008. In order to allow the townhomes, it also had to have a conditional use permit, because our three districts do not permit townhomes by right. So they downzoned it from industrial to R3 and requested the conditional use permit. Conditional use permits are only valid for up to three years. It's been way more than three years, so that CUP expired. So it puts the property in kind of a limbo status, if that makes sense, because in order to develop it as townhomes, they'd have to come back and ask for that conditional use permit again.
Okay, thank you. So I'm going to repeat some things back to you to make sure that I'm explaining this correctly and understanding it correctly. So on the left, we have the future land use map, which is essentially the projection of where the city wants to go with land use in the comprehensive plan. And on the right, we have the current zoning.
Correct.
And so on the left side, when we're looking at R3 for that major lot, what that typically allows is 12 units per acre when it's medium-density housing.
It would allow up to...
Up to?
12 units per acre.
Okay. And that's for 46.26 acres?
Yes, ma'am, it is.
Thank you. Could someone do the math on that for me really quick? And then you're looking at 6.91 acres at up to four single-family homes for that usage?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Okay, so 554.4, so 554 units by right currently, and then you're looking at an additional 12 to 16. So 570 some-odd units by right currently, when you're looking at single-family residents or town. Is that correct, the future land use?
If I could humbly...
Yeah, please.
Very humbly correct you. They're not by right.
Okay.
That is a...
Oh, that's the future land, I'm sorry.
That's a vision.
Yep.
Of what could be.
That's right. Okay, so the by right is less, but the future vision that the city has projected is around that 570 mark?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay. Thank you, that's really helpful. The reason that I ask that, and I'm going to go into some of the other questions that I have, because the main issues that have come up that I've been hearing from constituents tonight, as well as in discussion, have to do with density, have to do with traffic, and then in relation to the discussion around the clarity of the proffers and what that means as far as the relationship between the developers and the city, and how that works in favor of the constituents. The density concern for me has been interesting in that while this development is more compact, I'm going to ask Mr. Trent Warner in a minute, and I'll call you back in a second, Tom. My tech team here. The nature of what some of our constituents have brought up in regards to diversity, the product, and then we can dive into product materials, but specifically, that 750 mark, what the proffer is around that, how that works, and why condos in Lynchburg.
Okay, thank you, sure. I'll try to answer as many of those as I can. If I miss something, just remind me a little bit. So to go back just a little bit here, the discussion about affordable housing, sometimes that term is loosely used and has strict definitions in other places. So if you hear affordable housing, for us, that means we can sell them. They're affordable, people are buying them. And so we are in the market of around between $230,000 to $330,000 per home. That is not Section 8 housing, per se, of affordable housing. And these are one, two, and three, not just three-bedroom homes. We build three-bedroom homes and condos where we think they suit, which is what we are building in Cornerstone right now. Those are three-bedroom condos. But for here, because we have the flexibility, for example, my son lives in a one-bedroom apartment with a garage underneath a condo in Nashville, he loves it. He's a young professional. That's what he would love to have. If he could afford, if he could buy that, he would buy that instead of rent it. He's of that market, just like Carter mentioned earlier. So that's what I wanted to mention about affordable. As far as density goes, Mr. Martin is right. I guess what he's saying, it would go back to industrial. It was R3C. What we're asking for is R4. So the R4 by right zoning is 21.78 dwelling units per acre. R4 could be that, which would give us 1,100 units. What we ask for is the lay of the land. We did a lay of the land and put what we thought would be the maximum amount of units that we could possibly have, which was 750. The layout that you see, the condos that we had, was 560 units, because we had more three bedrooms. We wanted the flexibility to be able to go more. But that is only about 67% of what would be allowed in R4. And we are closer to R3. We're just a little bit above what R3 max is. So we built it and we designed it based on market and what the terrain allows, and that's why we asked for the 750.
Thank you. A follow-up question with that, because one of the concerns that has consistently come up is the flexibility of the project in regards to the timeline, and then I'd like to deal with timeline in regards to the traffic. But with the flexibility of the project, can you speak to the different products that are being offered, what the maxes are in those proffers, and why it has been designed that way, and the type of market that that would attract?
Yes, ma'am. So Kevin Foster was sort of our boilerplate. He built two condo buildings in Farmington that went like that. They were hotcakes, the description that Jill mentioned earlier. We know that they sell, and we know, for example, in Cornerstone, we're building 42 units and we have 17 pre-sold. There's a market out here for this, and it's at a great price. We just experienced 108 townhomes that we sold at the 280 to 310 mark, okay? We know that that sells too. That's the home run hit for us. So what we did was we took this footprint and we laid it out, and you've got two different concepts. And the reason you've got two different concepts is we wanted to see both extremes of what we liked. One was a townhouse and patio home layout. What we really would like to do is build the condos. However, if we got halfway through and we wanted to be flexible, we certainly don't want to come back here and go through this, right? So we asked for enough of the mix that we could build those units if we needed to. So that's why we asked for the 75 patioons and 75 townhomes. As far as the proffers go, the reason we did, whoops, this one. The reason we did the proffers we did, I'll show you here. There's something that really hasn't come home today yet, but this is what we're very excited about. Hopefully, you can see that on the screen. I can blow it up a little bit. Anybody see a zoom?
Off, right.
Yeah, thank you. Thanks, Landon. I recognize that voice. So I want to show you something here. Part of what Tom hasn't mentioned today is why we did the proffers we did. Many of the developments that he's talked about, I was part of, and we haven't done proffers like this. This is the reason we did the way they did. The two intersections that we've talked about, one is here and one is here. The one that's 1.2 miles away and the one that's 900 feet away. If you look, this is our development. This is 65 acres. This land here next to us, your economic development authority has this for sale. Essentially, it's for sale. They're taking bids on it right now. It's 165 acres. Across the street, on the market right now, is McNally land. It lays better than the EDA land. Doesn't lay as good as our land, but it's very developable. So, being smart, hopefully, why would we spend 100% on those two intersections?
So with the traffic proffers, if I understand correctly, you've purchased the land across the street in order to possibly straighten out the road?
That's correct.
The left turn lanes that you would be adding in addition, and then you've proffered a percentage for the increase, or the fix, both at the Forest-Wiggington intersection, and then also, is it the southbound on-ramp? Is that what I was looking at?
Yes, ma'am. Both of those statements are correct. And the reason is, and I wish it was a little more forthright here in the discussions back and forth, is we recognize that there's other developers involved. That's why we made the proffers the way we did.
And, I'm sorry, this goes back to Mr. Tom Martin. Mr. Martin, can you speak to when the last major maintenance was made for Wiggington? Because it is a precarious road. I rode it on a scooter going door-to-door. I've seen a number of your faces from knocking on doors, and I was constantly looking over my shoulder. So could you speak to the nature of that?
Council of Timmer, I'm actually going to defer to the traffic engineer.
Sure. The city annexed that road in 1976. It still carries the same alignment that was a dirt road since 1941. So no improvements have been made.
Yeah. Okay. And no improvements have been made since the annexation?
Let me clarify that. There have been, down by Boxwood and Bethel Estates, there was some stuff between the developer and the city as a partnership. I think the city did one side of the road, curb and gutter, developer did the other side. So that's the area down there. There has been two improvements down there.
Okay, so a city-developer partnership. And then, Mr. Tom Martin, the one point, sorry, I know, but this discussion, I think, is important, and I think it's important it's in the open. The 1.2 million that you reference as far as the road, if we were to look at the map of the development, is that the road cutting in through the front that has the school bus stop? Is that what you're talking about?
The 1.2 million for internal road improvements?
Yeah.
That's any public streets that would be within the development. That's the city's cost share of curb, gutter, sidewalk, that we would pay back on any development that had public streets.
So you're saying that's ongoing maintenance for that strip of road?
No, that's just, that would be basically a payment back to them for, they would pay for it upfront, then we would reimburse them for a portion of it.
That's the point. We build it all first, and then we get reimbursed for parts. We get reimbursed for 50% of the curb and gutter, 50% of the sidewalk. We get reimbursed for half of the construction, and that's the number that he was referring to on the internal streets. That would be an investment that the city makes to encourage development, which has worked, why many developments happen. But for us, we do have to build it all upfront, we have to pay for it all upfront.
Okay, thank you. Thank you both so much. I really appreciate it. The reason I wanted to go through that discussion really briefly is because the density numbers are not much higher than the R3 understanding of what it would be. And to my understanding, the design is actually far more accommodating for elderly residents because of single-level living, but it moves into the townhome, or to the condo structure, and that requires the R4 zoning. So there are some things that are being identified that have uses and reasons and purposes that are not always understood on their face, same when it comes to the affordable housing. And I am being asked to wrap up by a number of other members. So thank you all for your patience, and I appreciate the clarification of those terms and that understanding. Thank you.
Mr. Wilder? Do you want to go ahead? Chris? Mr. Mayor?
Mr. Wilder, go ahead. Okay, let me go ahead. Just real quick, most of the questions have already been answered. I'm concerned about the request to do the $2.3 million additional road of some sort. Is that customary, normal procedure for a developer to ask us to do that portion?
So Dr. Wilder, again, there was a range there, there was the developer's estimate, and then there was a city estimate. So on the high end, the city estimate was 2.8 million. Again, for standalone residential development, road improvements that are required to do that, it's really not typical for the city to incentivize it.
Okay.
And the entire point we were trying to lay out today is if council wants to go that direction, fine, but we need to figure out the timing and exactly how that works.
Thank you. I do have a concern about that. I did, toward the development, I do like the development, but I am concerned about the comments from the neighbors. So there is concerns that I do have.
And I appreciate that, Dr. Wilder, just to add a little bit to what Tom was saying and to answer the question. I hope that's okay, that, was it okay for me to answer?
Yes, go ahead.
Okay, I'm sorry. The 2.1 million, or the gap that we have and the difference, what is not mentioned is the revenue stream that we make of 2.1 million at the build-out, the full build-out. That gap that we're talking about, even if he's right in the expenses that he did versus I did, that investment is paid back to the city in less than a year, okay? So it is, if you want to call it seed money in an investment, it is an investment for the city to make in a development. So I just am encouraging you to, well, I hear what you're talking about, the neighbors too. I did want to state that none of those neighbors actually live next to us. They're not adjoining us. I just wanted to make that clear.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
We just need, we need to make a decision whether council tables or denies. We need to move on. We have a number of folks who've signed up for public comment, and at least three more public hearings before we get to that point, so.
Mr. Mayor? Listen, Ms.? Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just a couple of quick questions that'll be very brief, very quick, very pointed. What was the average, if you can refresh me, the average annual daily traffic on Wiggington before and after? Do you have that information readily available?
Yes, sir.
And if we could get that, while you're looking for that, staff, I don't know if it's you, Mr. Bendah, or Tom Martin, I'd like to have somebody speak to what is actually being proposed by the Economic Development Authority, which is an arm of government of city government. That's right next to that, that we've actually put out an RFP for and asked people to bid for. If somebody could speak to that and explain what we're trying to do there, that would be beneficial as well.
Oops. Yep. To answer the first question about the traffic, so the ADT that we have right now on Wiggington Road is 3,857. So our 4,923 at full build-out, 10 years out, that full build-out does double. But to give you an idea, that number...
So what is that, what does that double amount to?
The double comes to 8,780, and on screen, I've got some examples.
I don't need any more. You gave me everything I need, because I just want to point out, I'm looking at another traffic study right now. Ward's Ferry Road, is it 11,000?
That's right.
Right? So the traffic on Ward's Ferry Road is way more than the traffic that this will put on Wiggington, and it's a very similar situated road. I don't think that there's any issue in us finding the funds in the current CIP to actually make the investment into Wiggington Road infrastructure. I think that's probably what we should be considering and looking at in our current CIP as we're moving things around. Mr. Martin, can you speak to the EDA property?
I can speak briefly. So the Economic Development Authority is a separate board appointed by...
we should be considering and looking at in our current CIP as we're moving things around. Mr. Martin, can you speak to the EDA property?
I, I can speak briefly. So, the Economic Development Authority is a separate board appointed by council. The property that we're speaking of, I believe, the red, their 165 acres, they, my understanding is they've studied it, believe that it might be more appropriate for residential development. They've put out requests for proposals. They have not decided what they're, if they're going to move forward or what, but-
Has anything been awarded?
No, sir. Not to my knowledge.
Is anybody sure about that? We don't know?
Yeah, I'm positive they have not awarded anything.
And what kind of, do we know how many units we're trying to get out of that?
Again, you know, the, they, they have received a proposal. I'm not sure that's subject to public disclosure at this point.
So, there has been a proposal for somebody to build out that, that EDA?
Sure. I can tell you someone responded.
Okay. So, so, so the city of Lynchburg, or the Economic Development Authority, rather, has a proposal right now to do 126-acre development right next door to this. Right? So, by delaying this, right, and I'm just trying to point some things out, by delaying this, where we end up is, you know, do we end up creating a situation? Because 30 days often turns into 60 days, and then to 90 days, and then to 120 days, if we kick this can down the road. And government's really good at kicking the can down the road, and I think we need to get out of kicking the can down the road. The reality is, we have to develop our city. What did the planning commission recommend?
Planning commission recommended approval.
So, the planning commission recommended approval. That's something that I found very interesting that wasn't mentioned by anybody yet tonight. Right? That the planning commission recommended approval. Was that mentioned?
I did mention it at very first.
It's been long, so I apologized for forgetting.
Quite all right.
But, so we've got the planning commission recommended approval. I've been out there, and I'll tell you something. I know it's locked, right? And I see some people here in the audience that I haven't seen in a long time. The one I'm looking at right there is Mark Burrell. And, 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 and I think of Mark Burrell because I remember Windhurst, right? Everybody thought they were crazy. And my dad was working with some local realtors, and he was helping Kevin out. And I remember when Windpark Circle was the first street that was built. Andy Maddox, who's not here, we've seen him in here recently, Mark Burrell, and I think Kevin, all put model homes up there. They called it the "Street of Dreams." That was what they called it back then. It was crazy to everybody else, but they knew when they were jumping into this, that they were going to build something that the citizens had a demand for, and boy, were they right. Because Windhurst got gobbled up. It was like anything we'd ever seen in the city. Times have changed, right? And now, people don't want the maintenance. I'm sick of cutting my grass, right? My neighbor will probably tell you the same thing sometimes. And, you know, it's, it's, this is a visionary project, right? I remember what Windhurst was like vividly. We're approaching 25 years, a quarter century, since that project started. And it's time for something that we need new development in Lynchburg. Look, I understand. I get it. People have lots of concerns about the traffic. Right? I live off Ward's Ferry Road. I live with that traffic every day. Right? The traffic that has been thrown on us down there is unbelievable. I do think that we need to make it a priority in how we spend our capital improvement dollars, and I think that we need to prioritize in our current CIP, those Wiggington Road improvements. Right? And it makes perfect sense for the developer to offer to pay a portion of it when the Economic Development Authority is trying to get another development right next door, because that developer should pay a portion also, and then the city should pay a portion, a portion also. Not to mention, one of these proffers is over a mile and a half away. Never seen anything like that. So, that's the thing. We've got new jobs coming from our great employers in the city, Framatone, for one example. Right? Very close, very close to that project. We're going to need places to put those people when they apply for those jobs. We want those people to live in the city and not the county. We want their children to go to Lynchburg City Schools, not Bedford County Public Schools. Right? That's what we want. We want those families in our city. And if we don't build housing for them, they're not going to come. I get it. I understand. I sympathize with the residents' concerns about the 750-unit project. But as the city council, we're limited to specific rezoning factors. Right? There's only certain things that we're allowed to consider. I, I think that we can solve this traffic problem. We're not looking at that overnight. It's going to be two years worth of site work, is what I was told. Two years before they even start putting foundations in. We can get to work on committing the funds to fixing Wiggington Road and building out Wiggington Road. And not to mention, I've been in the properties this developer has developed. I've toured Heritage Point Townhomes as one of probably the more recent ones. The quality's there. I know that there was some concerns mentioned by city staff about the building materials and so forth. I know they're going to do it right. They've got a reputation to do it. So, considering all that, I'm going to make a substitute motion that we approve this tonight.
Second. Want to speak to you? Second.
Sure. I mean, the only thing I want to add to this is, is I really do think we need to use the CIP process to find those funds to, to, to fix these traffic problems and do the build-out on Wiggington Road. You know, it sounds to me like we've already started down by Bethel Park and some other areas. We need to take a look at what it's going to take to finish that.
Mr.?
I'll be brief on this one. I, I have been in support of this project as I've grown in understanding, and I've met with a number of residents, and I have shared their concerns, especially in the context of the traffic. And so, with that, and I think council member Ms. Jin's comments regarding the CIP, I would like to ask if there's verbal commitment from this council that we would seriously, that we would put Wiggington CIP traffic in, in this next budget cycle. And the reason I ask that is it has been neglected for over 40 years since we annexed it into the city, and there is efforts to develop it beyond this current development through the EDA and others, and that is a city responsibility. And so, I, I would really welcome if that-
Thank you.
Yes? Okay.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I appreciate everybody's patience on this. I know this is going a little bit long, but this is a big one. This is a big one. This is, this is big for our city. And, and it's, it's actually, I look at it as great news for Lynchburg. I'm very excited about this project. I am committed to make sure that the city, we make the commitment to fix Wiggington Road. Ever since it's been annexed, nothing's happened with that road to, to fix it. And being from a part of the city that was annexed where a lot of promises were made that still haven't exactly taken place, most of them have, I understand the promises made, promises kept. Wiggington Road deserves a commitment from us. I want to thank the developers and the, and the people here, because they've done an excellent job at making a commitment of their time, their money, and their expertise to bring about a wonderful project. But we, as council members, also need to understand that transportation and traffic, that's our primary responsibility, or at least one of the top three: public safety, public schools, and transportation. That's us. Okay? That's on us. We need to absolutely keep our commitment to fixing Wiggington Road. Affordable is, is it a relative term in that neighborhood? This is affordable. There are people that want to shop at those grocery stores. There are people that want to live in their parents' neighborhoods. I've gotten letters of folks who are very committed to staying close to home, and, and they're, they're married to the grocery store they like over there. I mean, it's, it's a serious thing. And they're excited because they're going to have a house that they can afford. And affordability is a relative term, but ultimately, I think it's, it's going to keep some families in the same area. So, that's great. Job creation, amazing what we're talking about. The number of years this is going to create great-paying jobs and taxpayers in our city. And homeownership, what a great thing. That, that's generational wealth that we can pass on to children. People that live in, in apartments and projects and government housing, they have nothing, nothing to give their kids. These are homeownership. That's something you can pass on to your children and create generational wealth. I inherited the, the house I'm in from my father. Okay? And I benefited from that, and that's general wa, generational wealth. That's happiness. That's the American dream. That's what we believe in. Far from a nightmare. This is another dream. Windhurst, I, I was in Richmond when Windhurst came along. I was in Richmond when Cornerstein came along. When I came back from working up there for the governor, I saw these great communities. I was amazed at them. I had no idea that, that certain roads even connected to other roads. But what great communities they've turned into. West Point, I think, is the next great community. I am, I think they're great people, local people, that we trust. This isn't some foreign groups coming in here and doing things. This isn't dark realty. This is Lynchburg families that I've known for generations, and I trust them. And I think they have our best interests at heart. And I have no problem committing to them and to the city and to you that I will work to fix that road and make sure that as it rolls out, we appropriately roll out roads that accommodate this great community. So, I, I definitely am in favor of this, and I would propose that we pass it.
Thank you. Mr. Reed?
Yes. So, I, again, nothing against any of the developer, the, the builder, the realtors, everybody that's in favor of this. It's nothing to do with that. They're all reputable, good people with great products. So, again, it's nothing to do with that. Okay? It is literally just about the concerns from the residents, concerns from our planner, just some of the details I still feel like has to be ironed out. But I will say to my colleagues, when we've said no to plans on Ward's Ferry Road that were traffic and safety-related, and I hear the same colleague just say, "It's fine to double the traffic on this road just because Ward's Ferry's got 11,000 people on it?" I'm still speaking. That is a ridiculous reason to approve this. We talk about safety all the time, and we say no to projects all the time because of traffic safety, all the time, on that specific road. So, that is not a reason to say, "Okay, because of there, and we deal with it over there, we should say yes over here." Absolutely not. To double it? No. No. That's illogical. Second, secondly, to then say, "We should take the $2.8 million or over $2 million that is costing the city taxpayer dollars that we talk about all the time and being wise stewards of," and say, "Let's put them on tap to cover the cost that this new development will now, now cost us," and say, "Hey, all the city pay for this development that is going to cost that double tra, traffic flow situation." Have we asked them? Do they want to? Do all the citizens of our city want to pay for the increase on Wiggington Road for this development? We haven't discussed that. It's not in our budget. We're not deciding it tonight. And that's completely irresponsible to then to say, "Well, we're going to make that decision because we, because we support this development." It's not about that. We are making very illogical statements that we've never made before, and we've actually opposed a million things for the same exact reasons we're not supporting this project. We can vote on your substitute, on your amendment, but I think that the reasons for now supporting it, despite the fact that we like the developer, builder, and realtors, and the job creation and all the positive, yes, that's great. But there is a lot of reasons to pause this, bring it back to the table, and consider all the things that we've heard tonight that don't make this the right thing to do right now.
December 20th, 4:44 PM, we urge this city council to prioritize the preservation of our community's character and quality of life by rejecting this rezoning proposal. Thank you for your consideration. That is the first submission on this petition. No one is asking for a change in the Wiggington Road character. The premise of, "This is great for all the reasons," the very first comment at the top, "I vehemently oppose this rezoning. I do not want to see Wiggington Road become," and I have an affinity for it, "but Timberlake Road and Gray's Mill." They don't want it. That's the top of the second page. "No more housing in area, please. Against rezoning for more homes built. I oppose the building of these homes and townhomes." I'm just reading what it says. "Hell, no. I'm in the Boonsborough, in Boonsborough. My parents are on the other side of Wayton. It's bad enough with deer and terrible drivers. We are, already have no way, we do not need overpriced luxury parents and their..." Typo. I, I mean, I, I have gone page by page and at least pointed to one. We're opposed to the building of apartments and multifamily dwellings in the Wigging- No one here who actually lives, no one lives adjacent. I would like to point that out, so it's impossible. But no one in this area says they want this. No one who lives there wants it. I, I don't, guys, I, quite simply, it's a question of, who do we want to represent? And I'll call the question.
Yes, um-
I'll, whoa, whoa.
Go ahead. Go ahead.
I'm not finished.
Go ahead.
Who do we want to represent? Do we want to represent big growth, big development, which, yes, is local? Great. Sure. Or do we want to represent the folks who have bought their home, made an investment in their property, in their community, and don't want to see it necessarily change? I could go down the path of who's donated who, and no, we don't need to go there. The bottom line is this. If we vote in favor of adopting this right now, we're saying we, the taxpayers, are going to be on the hook for some form of improvement on a development we don't even know what it's going to look like eight years from now. Do we not see the problem with that? Could we at least table it to get concrete yes or no what this is going to look like? Could we at least make an educated decision? Look, I'm not going to vote in favor of this thing, probably regardless what they come back, but at least can we make an educated decision? I mean, otherwise, we are legitimately adopting quote-unquote "a Windhurst" with no idea what Windhurst is going to look like. At least Windhurst was supposed to be three stories, if you remember back. Three stories tall, all these condos and apartments. There was supposed to be a, a grocery store too, but, oh, wait, hit, and that changed. We don't have that here. We don't know what concept is going to be coming at all. And also, we can't compare this to a Windhurst or a Cornerstone, because you have Green Drew, Greenview Drive, and you have Enterprise Drive, which are both four-lane roads with a 35 mile an hour speed limit that was already existing beforehand. This is a road that was a dirt road that was made in the 40s. And we want to put an, an another 800 dwellings there when I, in our hands, guys. Did you even have the time? We did have the time. Did you even have, like, the courtesy to read through some of them? At least, let's make an educated decision. If you still want to adopt it, I don't know why you would, at least make, demonstrate you're willing to make an educated decision about what it's going to look like. That's all I'm asking.
You done, Mr. Feraldi?
I can keep going.
Mr. Mishell?
So, just a, just a couple of things. You know, we need, we need to look at the facts. We need to look at the objectivity here. Right? Like, like, there's only certain reasons we can deny these things. There was some sensationalism, some mischaracterization. I would love to have, you know, addressed 1 million items since I've been on city council, but I'm looking at a 20-year council member back in the room, and I don't think he got to the million mark. So, so I just want to point that out. One thing that Mr. Feraldi identified in our work session was that in the next five years, we're supposed to be spending $4.3 million to tear down houses. To tear down houses, to seize people's property and tear down houses is currently in our CIP. Right? What I have to say is, we shouldn't be in the, in the, in the business of tearing things down. We should be in the business of building things. So, the $4.3 million, the, the $4.3 million that we currently have in the CIP to tear down people's houses is more than enough to address the $2.8 million in that ballpark we would need to make the improvements on Wiggington Road. I live in an annexed subdivision. When I talk to my neighbors that have lived there since it was Campbell County, they remind me all the time, "They never got what the city promised." This council can get out of the business of wasteful spending to tear things down and get into the business of building our roads and developing our city and bringing families in to attend our public schools. in to attend our public schools and actually turning the corner. That's what we can do, and I urge my colleagues to support this substitute motion. Call the question, Mr. Mayor. Call the question.
May I have a vote? Call the question.
Was this a, a motion to approve the entire petition?
This is a motion to approve the, uh...
Future land use map?
Future land use map.
Okay. All right. Initiating the vote now.
Now, you got to hit E vote. Hit E vote, hit E vote.
The motion passes 4-3.
Mr. Mayor?
Speaking to the, to the main motion now?
I, I would like to point out for the record that I was speaking vehemently against the notion of $4.3 million to demolish houses, just because that was left out.
Yes.
So I wanted that to be displayed for the record.
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you. May I have a motion to, to vote on rezoning?
The substitute motion has passed, Mr. Mayor, so now that becomes the main motion to approve the future land use map.
Yes. May I have a motion to, to approve future land use map?
Second.
Second.
Any discussion? No discussion? Let's vote.
Initiating the vote.
My Google Chrome decided to update.
Is that it on this?
We have, uh, I think, another ordinance here.
Yeah.
I'll make a motion to adopt the...
Future land use...
Rezoning of 815.
Rezoning, yes.
I'll make a motion to, uh, approve the rezoning of 815 through 906 Wiggington Road to allow for the construction of the village at West Point.
May I have a, any discussion? No discussion?
We do, we do need a second. Thank you.
Now, a second. Any discussion? No, no discussion. Let's vote.
Initiating the vote now.
Get it done. I'm tired.
Councilman Farady? The motion passes 5-2.
Consideration of adoption and ordinance, amending the zoning ordinance by revising and updating city floodplain management regulations. Ms. Erin Hawkins will provide summary of this request.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. You may recall this came before you ate your work item, um, work, uh, sorry, my medicine is worn off this evening, so my apologies. Um, but, um, but we had brought this before you for the work session, um, back on, um, March 11th, um, discussing the updates to the, um, city's floodplain ordinance. To jump to the, um, the adoption of what we were asking for are the three main items, um, to align the city code with the minimum requirements for the model ordinance. Um, this is in, uh, in compliance with the state and federal requirements and has been reviewed by both DCR and FEMA, um, for its, um, uh, to meet the requirements. The two changes, um, that are really coming out of the ordinance update, one is to update the underlying zoning, um, that would be allowed in a floodway area. Essentially, what is, um, it is precluded now in floodway to allow those underlying zoning uses, whereas with the amendments that we are proposing, it would allow those underlying zoning uses for existing structures only for an adaptive reuse. It doesn't allow for new construction or expansion of those facilities, but just adaptive reuse of the existing structure, um, that would be located in the floodway. The third bullet is, um, city staff in reviewing the ordinance and looking at, um, long-range, you know, feasibility for, um, protecting on, um, for flooding, um, we are recommending to increase the freeboard requirement from 12 inches to 18 inches. Um, it is, um, up to council as to whether or not you want that to be adopted as a new standard for it. Um, 12 inches is the, is the generally accepted, um, minimum freeboard, um, requirement. This just adds a, a level of protection to the, um, to the structure, um, so that during a flood event, that structure is elevated 12 inches above that wa- predicted water surface elevation. 18 inches is a, a higher standard, um, and it would apply to new construction or substantially improved structures. Um, there were some questions last time, um, that I, I do believe information had been provided to, to council members, um, but I will recap briefly that historic homes, uh, I believe there was a, a question from you, um, that historic structures may be va- uh, granted a variance or an exception, um, to the requirements. And it's really, it's, it hinges on, um, whether or not it would affect that structure's designation as a historic structure, um, if it would change anything that would then make it a nonhistoric, um, exterior of the building. Um, it still, um, requires a certain level of protection on the interior, on things that could be shielded from, um, the public view, um, but to be able to make that structure more secure, more safe during floodwaters, but there are provisions for that in the, the desk guide that we have, um, for this. So the information that was provided from you was taken directly out of the, our floodplain managers', um, information. There was also a question about substantial damages. Um, substantial improvement, you're kind of going into it knowing that you're going to be making these improvements, um, and it's understandable that substantial damages are from a flood itself, from a fire, for some other extenuating circumstance, you would have damages that could exceed, um, that 50% threshold. In reviewing information to understand it better, uh, the, the cost threshold for that is based on the cost to repair the structure to pre, um, to what it was, essentially. Um, it doesn't include the cost for architectural engineering. It doesn't include the cost for, um, other, um, emergency reasons or safety reasons, um, or survey costs or other, um, demolition or emergency repairs. Um, so there are a number of items that do not have to be included within that, um, that cost...
Emergency repairs.
Emergency repairs. So if you were, if there were emergency repairs that were needed to make the structure safe, that would not necessarily have to be, um, included in that cost of repair. Um, and then there are other, um, if there's an accessory structure or other, um, things that were needing to be replaced on the property, um, those don't necessarily have to, um, they don't go towards meeting that, um, substantial damage definition. So if it's an accessory structure, fencing, some other, um, uh, item that needed to be addressed during the repair for the, for the property, that doesn't necessarily meet the substantial damage definition. So to your point earlier is that you, you had, if there were, or had questioned if there were any exceptions. While there aren't really any, um, explicit exceptions provided, there are a number of items that are in the, um, in the program guide that allows you to kind of parse out, this is the actual cost to repair. These are the, um, uh, supportive costs going into that, um, the, the survey, the engineering, the, any other costs that you would have associated with that. Um, so that was just to make sure, um, I hope that gave you some of the information that you were looking for. I'd be happy to answer any other, um, questions. Um, but what we were, um, bringing forward tonight is a recommendation, um, for approval for the ordinance amendments. Um, Planning Commission did recommend approval, um, uh, 4 to 1, um, at the Planning Commission meeting on February 12th. Um, after the public hearing, I'll be happy to answer any additional questions that you have. Thank you.
Is there anyone in here to speak in favor? Anyone to speak in opposition? Alicia, is there any? Yes, sir.
My name is Doyle Allen, and I'm in, I'm here to speak in opposition to the proposed change in the ordinance. My first question is, let me, I'll give you a little bit of my background. Um, I received a notice about this mainly because I, I developed Bethel Park, Bethel Estates off of, um, Wiggington Road, and I've got six lots left in there that were in the upper reaches of the floodplain, but the 100-year floodplain does show up on this property, so I got, received a notice. And I, that, that's the reason. I attended a planning commission, uh, more out of curiosity than anything else, but, um, my, my question is, why? Why do we want to make the city of Lynchburg standard higher than the national standard? The national standard is 12 inches of freeboard. We want to increase that to 18, and my question is why? So I asked this to Erin, and she replied back that, uh, and if I can, I'd like to read you an excerpt of what she said. She says that "One factor that we considered when making this recommendation is the city's goal to join the Community Rating System, CRS program. This program allows for reduc- reduced premiums for policyholders based on the level the community is, is within the program, which also recognizes and would provide, in this instance, greater points for communities that have adopted a higher standard." Well, if you, I, I disagree with that statement, because if you are outside, if you're a tenth or an inch above the floodplain, you don't get a higher insurance rating. So how are you going to save anything when you're going to, uh, when you're rating, when you're not rated at a high rate? You understand what I'm saying? Um, so, but, and the cost to improve, to raise it a, uh, extra half a foot is not going to be more by the builder, it's going to be the consumer is going to end up paying for it and end. And so my question is, why do we want this to start with? And why do we want a different rate than, um, the national standard? I'll be glad to answer any questions you might have. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone else to speak in opposition? Are there any voicemails?
There are none.
Public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion?
Mr. Mayor?
Yes, sir.
I've got just a couple of questions, um, if that's okay. So, can you, can you speak to what he mentioned about the, the premiums as far as, as the...
So...
What is, what is the cost savings?
Gotcha. So the CRS program, the Community Rating System program, um, there are a number of , um, localities throughout the United States that participate in this program. Um, recently, I, I was looking, um, this week is Flood Awareness Week. Um, if you haven't noticed, uh, there might have been some, um, information pop up on your social media that we do promote and, and we work, um, in getting information out there. Um, and I happened to notice, um, uh, our, uh, city to the west of us, Roanoke, they are a, a level six, um, within the CRS program. What that means, when you come in, um, at a nine, um, every level that you come up in the CRS program, it can afford the, the premium holder a 5% reduction on their premium rate. So that's whether if you're at nine, it starts at 5%. If you go to eight, that's 10%. Seven's 15%. So if you're community six, um, like Roanoke is, you would have upwards of a, of a 20% discount on your premium. So looking at the, the CRS program, it is a long-term goal, um, for the city to join that program, um, and the city, um, city staff has previously looked at that, including myself and some others, um, that participated in the, um, ordinance update. So, and again, it's, it, it's a recommendation to increase that. Um, it does afford a level of protection to the structure. Um, and I, I want, I do want to stress that this pertains to a structure that is located in the floodplain. If the structure is elevated on a higher piece of land and is completely outside the floodplain, this requirement has nothing to do with that structure. They don't have to elevate it if they are out. It's only if a structure is within a, within the flood zone itself.
So, and, and as I understand, if you're elevated, you're not eligible for flood insurance, I think, is, is...
Oh, no, you're absolutely eligible for flood insurance. Um, every citizen that, every citizen in the city of Lynchburg is eligible to receive, um, flood insurance through the NFIP because we have our ordinance and because we enforce our ordinance.
Okay.
That is the reason why people are allowed to do it, um, or they can, um, they're eligible to do it. Your community has to be in NFIP program in order for you to be able to go through that. Your normal homeowner's insurance does not cover flood insurance. It has to be a separate policy for flood insurance.
Correct. And it's, and it's through the, through FEMA...
Mm-hmm.
Is, is who it's through. The concerns I have, what, are we at any level right now?
No, sir, we're not, because we have not entered, formally entered into the program. Um, when we looked at this before, we anticipated, um, and I think if it was even with the, um, an increase in the freeboard, we would probably come in at a level eight, um, coming in, or it was a nine borderline eight. Um, and I think if, if my memory serves me correctly, because I will admit it has been a few years, um, the additional freeboard would have given us additional points. It's a point system that they, that, um, the DCR and, and FEMA essentially grade your program and gives you the, assigns these points. Um, and what we were able to determine is that we would come in most likely at a nine with the opportunity to go to an eight if we had some of these higher standards.
So, and if we went with the standard, which is a 12-inch freeboard?
That's a minimal freeboard requirement, and so that...
And would we still get some kind of...
I don't know that it would be, I would have to go back and look. I don't know it would be a higher, um, higher standard. Um, I could offer, um, that, you know, the 12 inches could stand for the time being and that we could always revisit this, should we, um, get to the point of joining the CRS program, and if we wanted to move forward with that, we could bring it back before council, um, to consider a higher standard.
Is there any reason we couldn't set this aside tonight and have that looked at with the 12-inch standard? Because I know you heard me, I had the discussion. I dealt with a house in Roanoke last year, and it was a nightmare, right? They had a fire, and Roanoke County absolutely delayed, delayed, delayed for months because of this requirement. And when people, when they have their homes catch on fire, they don't want to be delayed for months to get back in. They want to get back in. The emergency repairs you're talking about, that's tarping roofs, that's boarding up windows, that's things like that. That's not going to qualify for actually rebuilding. So what we're going to do is, we're going to create a situation if we enter into this ordinance tonight, where if somebody has a home fire, right, and their roof catches on fire and the roof burns up, then, then we're going to be looking at being able to enforce them, if they're in that floodplain, potentially elevating or floodproofing their home when it wasn't like that before. And there's a lot of, um, coverage issues you can run into with insurance companies with that. You know, if you don't have the proper code upgrade coverage, if you don't have, uh, the right riders on your policy, where you could get stuck because you don't know enough about your insurance policy, right, and not being able to afford to floodproof your home because the coverage simply isn't there. So I am very hesitant. What I would like to do is, um, table this until we can get a discussion about that 12 inches of freeboard, uh, and, and look at what that impact would be.
Well, 12 inches is already the requirement in the ordinance.
So it's already a requirement?
It's already in, and it has been in there for the past 15 years.
And we haven't tried to enter into this program with the 12-inch freeboard requirement?
No, not, not yet. No, sir.
All right. So then I'm going to make a motion to deny this, because I, I just am not comfortable with going forward and, and making these changes that could set people in a different direction, um, if they have a hazard in their home.
Second?
I think there are other changes in the floodplain waters than the freeboard. Would your, uh, motion be to accept the other measures and, with the exception of the 18-inch freeboard, or to deny the entire ordinance? freeboard, or to deny the entire ordinance?
So I'm willing to amend the motion as you need me to, to, for the requirements, but what I want to make sure is that if somebody's home catches on fire and they hit that 50% substantial damage, that we don't have people coming in trying to enforce them elevating or lifting or floodproofing their homes, and, and they might not have that coverage. That's not right. When people go through hazards, they need to be able to get back in their homes.
So what's your motion?
My, so, so I don't, I'm not sure what, how would I need to amend that properly with that being the case?
Mayor, I guess I would just follow up with Erin if I could. Erin?
Yes, sir.
If council was to table this tonight, from what you're hearing, at least from what I assume is going to be a majority of council members, to adjust that freeboard towards more favorable, would that be an issue to bring that back for them to discuss it again?
It wouldn't be an issue to bring it back and maintain it at the 12 inches, which the city, has been the city's standard, the ordinance requirement for a number of years now. I would venture, and I guess I'm asking you, Mr. Freeman, if, if it could be amended to just maintain the 12 inches, adopt the, the first two bullet items that we had talked about, and then strike the third bullet from the changes, and we would just maintain it as 12 inches in the ordinance, not changing any of the requirements thus far.
I guess what I, what I want to check with before we do that is with FEMA.
Mm-hmm. The 12 inches passes muster with FEMA. That is not going to be an issue. No, sir.
So, so you're asking, essentially you're asking me to amend my motion to accept the first two bullets, and then...
Strike the third.
Strike the third. I'll accept that.
So, Erin, just to follow up, do you know where the 12 inches, excuse me, where the 12 inches needs to be adjusted in the ordinance versus the 18?
Give me one second. It is going to be on section 35.2-59.8.3, paragraph A, paragraph B2. And I believe those are the only two locations that it is at. I am scanning it very quickly. And I can repeat that if needed.
So, Councilwoman Miss Jones, would you accept this for a motion instead to adopt the ordinance as presented with the exception of where it needs to be changed to have 12 inches on the freeboard versus 18? Those will be changed, you know, as a condition of the adoption.
I think everybody understands that that's what I'm trying to do, and I will accept that change, and I appreciate you articulating that for us.
Yes, sir. Understood.
Second?
Any more discussion? Thank you.
Thank you for that, and if we were to ever bring it back, we'll certainly bring it back before council, maybe most likely with the CRS program as we move forward with that. We'll have our own discussions. Thank you all so much.
Thank you. Yes.
The motion passes 6-1.
Excellent agenda.
Point of order? Would a recess be in order?
Yes. Five-minute recess.
Whoa, come back.
Number nine, consideration of introducing ordinance. Amending FY 2025 water capital project fund budget appropriating $10,000, I mean, $10 million, $25,000, $25,900, I mean, $194 for the lead copper water service project. Mr. Tim Mitchell will provide a summary of this request.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This was present, this item was presented to City Council on February 25th at the council work session as a business item briefing. The recommendation is to amend the FY 2025 water capital projects fund budget and appropriate $10 million, $25,194 for air lead and copper water service line project, which is required by the, it's a federal requirement from EPA. This would be a combination of a $6.4 million loan, I'm rounding those off, and a $3.6 million principal forgiveness for, through the Virginia Resource, Virginia Resources Authority. This funding is for the federally mandated lead service line inventory and replacement requirements associated with the lead and copper rule revisions and lead and copper rule improvements. These funds will be utilized to continue our lead service line inventory process and fund lead service line and certain galvanized service line replacements on both the public and the private side. Currently, there are approximately 19,000 service lines that we remain unknown, so we'll identify those lines, the materials of those lines. We estimate the total program cost for the, over the next 10 years will be about $30 million. These are a couple, there, there are financing options available that would utilize the most favorable terms with the, with this loan, depending on, we will determine which financing option we would choose at the time of the closing. The funding provides us with the most cost-effective way to meet this, the requirements of this federally mandated program, as well as eliminate lead service lines in our water system. The conclusion of the public hearing, I'll be glad to answer any questions.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone speaking in favor of this project? Is there anyone speaking in opposition of this project? Ms. Alicia, are there any voicemail from citizens?
There are none.
Public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion?
Second?
Is there any discussion, sir? Please cast your vote.
Sorry. I know everybody's anxious to get out of here. This is just, I just want to comment real quickly, and I'm going to vote for it, but it just, it's crazy to me, okay, as a libertarian-leaning kind of guy, that nobody asked for this, and, and nobody opposed it, nobody was for it, and we're about to spend $10 million on it, because we're being required by those folks up in the Potomac to do it. I know that's all editorial, but I'm just going to throw it out there and then vote for it.
Mr. Ferrari?
About $2.5 billion we just spent just about 40 minutes ago, and the residents were all opposed to it. Thank you, Mr. Harris.
Thank you. Any more discussion?
There were, there were, there were a lot of people here on the other side, and nobody spoke on $10 million. It's just interesting. Sorry. Go ahead.
Any more discussion? Cast your vote, please.
Initiating vote now. The motion passes 6-1.
Item number 10, consideration of adopting a resolution approving the Virginia Department of Health Drinking Water State Revolving Fund FY 2023 bipartisan infrastructure law-led service line inventory funding. Mr. Tim Mitchell?
Again, good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of council. This is the second component of the, the equation. This was an offer from the Virginia Department of Health through the bipartisan infrastructure law to fund the lead service line replacement that you approved just a minute ago. And this funding, again, is low-interest loans through the Virginia Resource Authority and the revolving loan fund, as well as a principal forgiveness of up to $4 million. So we don't know exactly what the final offer is going to be. That's why the, the language in the recommendation is rounded off to $7 million and $4 million. But this is the second component, and again, with a principal forgiveness of $3.6 million, this is the most cost-effective way that we can address this mandated program. And at the conclusion of the public hearing, I'll be glad to answer any additional questions.
Thank you, sir. Is there anyone to speak in favor of this? Is there anyone speaking in opposition? Ms. Alicia, is there any voicemail from citizens?
There are none.
Public hearing is now closed. May I have a motion, please? Do I have a second?
Second.
Any discussion?
Just late to have a clean drinking water.
Yes, sir. Cast your votes, please.
The motion passes 7-0.
Our next section is public comment. Speakers, speakers have three minutes to talk. If you're speaking for a group, you have five minutes. City council will listen to your comments and may ask city manager to follow up. Citizens often have different opinions. To make sure everyone feels, feels comfortable speaking, there are no applauses, there are no applauses, no cheers, no cheers or jeers. Do not intimidate, insult, or disrupt others. Do not use profanity, promote businesses, or campaign for office. Here from citizen regarding economic development investment. Ms. Amanda Smithson.
That's me. Thank you, Mayor Taylor, and members of the city council. Thank you so much for the opportunity to stand up here today. As you mentioned, I am here to talk about return on investment for economic development, specifically downtown, and as you mentioned tonight, council member Miss Jones developing our city. A few weeks ago, I read that the city council may take up defunding the Downtown Lynchburg Association, and I became very concerned about that. The DLA has done incredible work making downtown vibrant. Why would we want to undercut our business community downtown and turn down the private match funding that comes with the DLA? I am a Lynchburger, but I live in the 03. I don't actually live downtown. And even so, I have a very acute awareness of how important this heart of our city is to all of Lynchburg. You might be surprised to learn that I am on the front lines of recruiting physicians to Lynchburg. to Lynchburg. I myself am not in medicine, but my husband is. He's a surgeon. And the way this works is that when a physician comes to Lynchburg and they're at the office talking about the OR schedule and MRI availability and whatever else they talk about there, the spouse and often the kids are with me or with, um, one of the other spouses, and what we do is we take them around Lynchburg and spend a lot of time trying to convince them that they want to live here so that we can bring them into our medical community here. We start and end downtown. I take them to Amazement Square. I take them to the academy. We have brunch at Duke's diner. I myself have taken these families to like the bright lights and walk them around and it's been like, you want to live here? Isn't this a great place? If we defund the DLA, we lose so much of that momentum, and it doesn't just affect the businesses downtown, though I have a heart for them, but it affects the entire community. We need that economic stability in our town, and the idea that we'd want to roll that back a decade of progress, I think we should increase funding. I think we should offer incentives to help sell the buildings downtown that need selling and fill the empty storefronts that need selling, and I think we should invest in our public libraries down there. I think this is the kind of return on investment that we need because you have to continue to grow businesses and the business community if we want a whole city to thrive. And so I know I emailed you all, a list of facts. I did a bit of a deep dive and a Freedom of Information Act request and looked at the return on investment and all the private match that businesses in Lynchburg put into this, and so I'd ask you to dig that up from your email and really consider how much the DLA has done for our city, not just downtown, but all of us who live here. Thank you.
We now hear from citizen regarding complaint against city building maintenance inspection department, lack of action, failure to enforce building code adopted by this council, failure to perform their jobs, responsibility unto this community in which they are accountable. Ms. Paley Bowles. Ms. Bowles? She's not here. Moving on. Hear from citizen regarding downtown Lynchburg Association, Samantha Citi.
Good evening, members of city council. My name is Sam Citi, and I live in Fort Hill neighborhood in Ward 3. Uh, I first came to Lynchburg in 2007 to pursue seminary studies at Liberty University. A year later, my brother Matthew suggested that I visit a new coffee shop that opened downtown. At that time, I wasn't very familiar with downtown Lynchburg, other than there wasn't much to do in 2008. However, my brother was convinced that this coffee shop was one of the best places in town, so we decided to check it out. Once I visited the White Hart, I understood why he thought it was, it was so special. It quickly became a regular spot for me where I would write 20-page papers for Dr. Carl Deemer's church history class, and I'm very proud to say I got A in that class because that man, God bless him, was a tough grader. And it also served as a gathering place for fellow seminarians to escape the business of campus life. But aside from the White Hart and a few other locations like the Depot and Waterstone, the downtown area left much to be desired. Looking back at my time in the graduate school in the late 2000s, I remember downtown as almost deserted. Now, my husband and I got married in 2011, moved away in 2013 for his job, and we returned in 2018 for my career. During our time away, we witnessed the city's economic expansion, particularly in the downtown area. 2018 was also the year that the Academy Center of the Arts opened its historic theater, attracting artists from all over the world to Lynchburg. It was where my daughter had her first dance recital, and my son discovered a love for theater through their youth theater program, filling a gap left by funding shortages in our public schools. Initiatives such as bright lights on the bluff walk, Art Alley fireworks on the Rivermont, Launch Lynchburg, and now the International Festival have brought people together for, from all over the area, generating $79 million in revenue, according to their annual report. Downtown has become a space where nonprofits meet, commerce thrives, and community is built. When we were looking for a house three years ago, we considered whether to buy in the city or in one of our surrounding counties. Ultimately, we chose our current home in Fort Hill because it was easy access to nearly all parts of town, especially downtown. However, we still appreciate the conveniences of Ward's Road that we've grown accustomed to on Ward's Road. We don't view it as an either-or situation between Ward's Road and downtown. Rather, all four wards must work together for the betterment of the city. I recognize that my story is anecdotal and could be easily dismissed as an outlier. All I ask is that you do not overlook our voices when we express that we need the DLA, not just from an economic standpoint, but as a way for the community to come together. Grad school brought me here to Lynchburg, but the DLA is one of many reasons why I stayed. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Hear from a citizen regarding building a stronger community through civil discussion. Katie Jergler. Ms. Katie Jergler?
I'm just going to go on for the next meeting because I know a lot of times.
Thank you. Hear from citizen regarding, regarding LCS school board issue and council member intimidation tactics. Cynthia, Ms. Cynthia Capps. Please state your name and your locality, your residency.
My name is Cynthia Capps. I live in Lynchburg. I'm a lifelong Lynchburg resident. Um, I won't be, uh, discussing the school board issue tonight. I stand before you tonight as an educator, a concerned citizen, an advocate for the children of Lynchburg, a lifelong conservative Republican, but not as a quote, lying radical left socialist. I am here to insist on accountability, fairness, and a commitment to our students' future. Councilman Missions has harassed and intimidated our Save Our Schools group simply for speaking out against school closures. He has called us quote, lying radical left socialists for daring to voice our concerns. Worse yet, he has threatened us with legal action, an attempt to silence and bully us into submission, but we will not be silenced. We have screenshots of the threats, and I have hard copies with me tonight as well if you'd like to see them. And let's talk about accountability. Councilman Missions recently attacked and falsely accused Councilman Feraldi of harassing a citizen, insisting that he be dealt with in a future meeting. If that's going to be the standard, then we need to demand consistency. Councilman Missions must also be held accountable for his own harassment and intimidation of parents and community members like myself who simply want what's best for our children. Back in May, Councilman Missions made his stance clear when he stated that school closures are quote, "part of the process" and quote, "what needs to happen." Meanwhile, he continues to publicly deny that he supports school closings, but actions speak louder than words. Back then, he even attacked the mayor for listening to parents who wanted to keep schools open. How can he claim to represent the best interests, interests of our community while pushing an agenda that would harm our kids? We're also here to discuss the proposed $5.5 million increase in budget funding. This is a necessity, not a luxury. Without it, we'll lose more teachers, class sizes will grow, and resources will dwindle. At Fort Hill School alone, we desperately need an additional sped teacher to meet rising IEP demands. Our children's education and well-being depends on these resources. The proposal for the CIP is around $60 million, and although we don't know what the final dollar amount is that will be approved, there must be a dedicated, significant funding stream from city council for Lynchburg City Schools. Let's be clear, the funding is not for extravagant projects, it's for basic necessities. Schools like Sandusky Elementary have been neglected for far too long, and we cannot keep pushing this down the road. This increase is for basic needs, electricity, paving, fencing, just to provide a safe and functional learning environment. And yet, while our schools crumble, other beautification projects in the city continue to receive substantial funding. Flowers and fountains are nice, but they don't help our children learn, but a properly funded school will. The time for empty promises is over. We insist that Councilman Missions be held accountable for his ongoing harassment and intimidation. We insist that our city prioritize schools over cosmetic projects, and most importantly, we demand that our children be given the education and resources they deserve. Mr. Missions, you said earlier tonight you want, you wanted to be in the business of building things, so let's build our schools.
Thank you. Hear from citizen, a citizen regarding materials in public library, Cory Thomas.
Sorry, I have visual aids.
Please state your name and locality of residence, please.
Yes, sir. Good evening, Mayor Taylor, members of the city council. Uh, my name's Cory Thomas. I live in Ward 2, and I've been here in Lynchburg since 2011. Most of that time, I've been teaching English at Liberty and Longwood Universities. Um, in 2023, I was pregnant with my second child and wanted to find some books for my oldest about becoming a big brother, so we went to the library, which we've enjoyed their programming for a long time. The first book that I found was this one, When Aiden Became a Brother. I was surprised to find that the titular character is actually a little girl. Um, she has decided that she is actually a boy, and the entire book is a concern with the child's parents about the gender of the new sibling. As a conservative mom, I was disappointed to find the library using tax dollars to promote the concept of childhood gender transition, but as a good academic, I wanted to do further research. Two years later, I'm here to present my findings. To clarify, I'm exclusively discussing the children and teen sections of the library. Adults are presumably capable of exercising informed consent over their reading choices. I will briefly touch on two main areas of concern: age inappropriate materials and political bias. First, even the youngest readers are exposed to materials explicitly promoting far-left principles like critical race theory and radical gender ideologies. These are board books intended for toddlers. There are seven copies of the board book Anti-Racist Baby in the board, in the library system. Another board book provides a first conversation about race. Uh, there is also a pronoun dictionary, books about the gender spectrum and pride, all for toddlers. These topics are pervasive throughout the elementary and teen fiction sections as well, with 120 books listed in the library catalog under the subject heading queer fiction. Many books like this one have no external indication at all that they fall into this genre, which means that kids and teens could easily check them out unawares. Even more concerning are books like these, all three of which contain sexually explicit material, including descriptions of oral and anal sex and sections on masturbation and watching pornography. All of these are in the teen sections of the library. These books are wildly inappropriate for placement in a public institution like the library system, particularly in sections targeting minors. Second, less concerning, but also evident, there is blatant political bias in the children and teens biographies. There are 33 biographies of just three left-leaning Supreme Court justices, two of, 22 of Ruth Bader Ginsburg, eight of Sonia Sotomayor, and three of Katanji Brown Jackson. Of the six right-leaning justices currently serving, there are zero. Not even Clarence Thomas, who was appointed in 1991, has a single biography in the children's section. As another example, there are 18 juvenile biographies of Kamala Harris. There are three of Donald Trump, someone who has actually been president. This is an obvious attempt to lionize Democratic lawmakers while keeping young readers ignorant of the achievements of their conservative counterparts. I urge the city council under Section 42.1-35 of the Code of Virginia to establish a library board to ensure the library system fulfills its purpose as a repository of knowledge, not as an ideological weapon to influence the values of city's young readers. Thank you.
Thank you. We're now here from a group representative regarding fire department equipment, Jamie Maxwell, Lynchburg Firefighters Association. Yes, sir.
Uh, good evening, council. Jamie Max, I'm president of Lynchburg Firefighters Association. I've been coming up to this council, budget season, for the past eight years. When I come to you all, I come to you all with needs. Stuff that we need, medic number eight out there in the Timberlake area, that's your ward, Mr. Feraldi. It's obviously needed, wasn't it? We needed these things. I fought for it. Uh, council then, Sterling Waddle was there, fought back against it, sort of kind-ish. They were for it, but not sure about the funding. Tonight, I'm going to come to you about the Stryker Plan. The Stryker Plan, make a disclaimer, I do not work for Stryker, nor I plan on working for Stryker, uh, make sure everybody knows that. I'm here as an advocate for your city, Lynchburg Firefighters. The Stryker Plan is the least maintenance plan for the stretchers, power load systems, our cardiac monitors, Lucas 3 devices, and our stair chairs. For those of you who don't know who are Lucas, what the Lucas 3 device is, that's a device you wrap around your chest and provides compression during cardiac arrest. It's one of the most amazing things out there. This plan will also upgrade our cardiac monitors. Right now, we're about the 2015 level. We need to be at the 2025, 2026. This plan will upgrade our monitors to that, uh, all brand new. Right now, currently in the city of Lynchburg, we have about 77 durable items from Stryker. 53 of those items, 53 of those items are almost past their service life or just getting ready to be past their service life. I emailed every single one of you all documentation on this, uh, also on the Stryker Plan itself. What this means, hold on, I got malfunction here. What this means is that if one of these items breaks, Stryker might not fix it, even though we have a Stryker Plan, or it's going to cost more. Right now, as we speak, all the items need to be replaced. We need 200, $2.4 million in the budget. That's a line item. That's what we need in the budget right now. The fire chief has asked of this for the past two years, the Stryker Plan, and the city hall has turned it down. They say we don't need it. Fire chief asked for it twice. That must be something we might need. We keep depending upon grants and state funds for our equipment. That's a horrible policy, horrible policy. We shouldn't depend upon state, state funds or grants to buy much-needed equipment. Equipment's not for us, it's for them. Hopefully not for us. Uh, I should say that. It's for them. Everything that we use is for the citizens. Large cities such as New Orleans and Memphis, Memphis just today signed a $42 million contract with Stryker for this plan, so it must be okay. There are small rural towns in North Carolina or counties, there are small EMS agencies who also signed contracts with Stryker for this plan. It obviously works for big cities, little counties, and it definitely worked for us. There are multiple questions asked about this. I don't have a lot of time. Annual subscriptions for the fleet, one of the questions. It's about $8,000 a year for the engine companies and the one truck company in fire station number nine when it gets built. For each medic unit, it's going to cost about 37, or $38,000 a year for this plan. That's per unit, and that was one of the questions asked by council. What's covered in this plan? Everything is covered. The warranty on the, on the, uh, each item is bumper-to-bumper, uh, for one to two years. There is no extra anything in this. There's no, uh... I lost my place, I'm sorry. Lost where I was, I apologize. Uh, talking about exclusions or extra costs, the only exclusion, exclusion or extra cost would be if we destroy a mattress, which hasn't happened, or if we destroy straps, and that's very minimal cost whatsoever. In-house maintenance, Stryker doesn't certify in-house maintenance. They would have to do all the maintenance. Their maintenance person lives in Forest. We have no problem getting maintenance from Stryker. They'll also ask about downtime and if there's any spares. We have a couple spare stretchers, a couple spare monitors. Council, I really would like for you to push city manager and city hall to put this in the budget for this year. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. And now I hear from citizen regarding Lynchburg City School budget. Ms. Colleen Larkins, Save Our Schools. Please state your name and locale, please.
My name is Colleen Larkins. I'm representing Save Our Schools, and I live in Ward 4. My name is Colleen Larkins. I'm representing Save Our Schools. I want to make that abundantly clear. Vice Mayor Deemer, you put on, so you put online that I am hiding. So did you, Councilman Missions. That I am not willing to stand up and say that I wish Save Our Schools. I've never hid. I have been here time and time again, and I am more proud than ever to be a parent advocating. Mayor Taylor, I want to talk to you for a second. You know I've always been kind, polite, but passionate. I believe those are values that you hold too. Last week, after I expressed that I didn't believe Marty Mission should be on the joint committee, he went on to attack me, to say that there is going to be a lawsuit against me and my family. He asked his followers to find me. I don't know what that means, but what it means to me is that I better put some no trespassing signs up, and I better have some cameras at my home where my children live. He went on then to continue to write that I am trying to program our that I am trying to program our children with LGBTQ programming. I'm not trying to program our children with anything. I am a private citizen, a private citizen that has the right to have freedom of speech. It's ironic that Missions would go on to say that Councilman Feraldi, by simply telling somebody what they said was uncalled-for, was intimidation, when I now have to get a lawyer. I have to take money out of my hard-earned middle-class salary because you don't like what I said. That is unacceptable, Lynchburg. We have sat in this room and watched him try to bully our city attorney, say terrible things to our former mayor, bully everyone around him, and now he's going after parents? I have screenshots of everything I am saying, and I am happy to send it to each and every one of you. Freedom of speech is my right. Defending my schools that my children go to is my right. If he is doing this in public, what is he doing in private? Who is he bullying behind closed doors? Who is he intimidating into doing what he wants? I am not scared or intimidated. I will not stop advocating for my children, ever. And this idea that you want to push me around, or say you don't know who I am, or call me a socialist and make my reputation tainted in Lynchburg, is beyond terrible. None of you should stand for that, regardless of what side of the aisle you are on. That should never be what this is about. I wrote this beautiful speech about teachers and funding them, about our $5.5 million that we desperately need. But then I watched the work session, and I sat in this room for the last three and a half hours, and I thought to myself, what would I tell my kids if someone tried to bully them? I would tell my kids, you don't back down to a bully. And I know you are a man of integrity. I know you are a man who loves our children in our city. And I need you to hear it from the horse's mouth, that what is happening on your council is not okay. We need to do better for these kids. And in my last minute, I will tell you this: crumbling schools and not enough funding is getting us nowhere. We need that $5.5 million, not for luxuries, for necessities, for teachers that were let go last year, for special ed aides, for subs in our buildings so our teachers can take a well-deserved day off. If you want to put money into instruction, then take care of the people who are doing the instructing. Many of you ran on schools. It is time to put your money where your mouth is, and it is time to end the foolishness of intimidation in Lynchburg.
Thank you. We hear from citizen regarding library consideration, Ryan Thomas.
Good evening. I'm Ryan Thomas, Ward Two. Data will have already been presented tonight demonstrating both the prevalence of age inappropriate material for children, as well as a clear bias towards leftist ideology in the composition of the library collection. I am not here to present those data points again. What I would like to do with my time is anticipate and answer objections from our opponents. To begin with, they will label us "book banners." That term has, in perfectly Orwellian fashion, been redefined by the Left to mean any action taken to ensure that books exist in their proper contexts. In reality, it means making printing, distribution, or ownership of certain books illegal. That's what book banning actually means, and no one here is advocating that. Our opponents will say that if we don't like the books, we don't have to check them out. I find this disingenuous, and it deflects from the issue. Placing literally dozens of books advocating for radical gender theory, neo-Marxism, and other politically charged issues front and center in the children's section creates an ideological mind field that families shouldn't be forced to navigate. And part of the problem is that many of these books seem so innocuous. We Care: A First Conversation About Justice seems great. Everybody loves justice and caring, right? Only problem is that it's basically an intro to neo-Marxism, replete with explicit anti-cop sentiment, collectivist propaganda, and even a dose of moral anti-realism. Moral anti-realism for toddlers. And I wish I was being hyperbolic. I'm not. Our opponents will argue that the majority of the content in the kids' section is non-political. Again, this misses the point. Of the books that are politically charged, virtually all of them advocate explicitly for leftist ideology. While I cannot say for absolute certain that there aren't any right-leaning counterparts, I wasn't personally able to find one. The content bias is also suggestive, and to pretend it's not is disingenuous. When the overwhelming majority of politically and sexually charged content supports only one extreme end of the ideological spectrum, that is a statement. That is an endorsement. The library exists to serve the community without bias, especially the economically disadvantaged who may or may not be able to afford books on their own. By curating a selection of books that has an overwhelmingly leftist slant while omitting their right-leaning counterparts, the library is failing to both represent and meet the needs of all the citizens of Lynchburg. I am therefore calling upon the City Council in accordance with State Code Section 42.1-35 to establish a library board and appoint its members to oversee collection management and ensure that the public library system is not being weaponized to further political agendas. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Here from a group representative regarding the library and following the rules, Mr. Greg
Good evening, Mayor Taylor, Vice Mayor Deemer, and City Council members. My name is Greg Berry, and I'm representing the Lynchburg City Elders. To God and His Son, Jesus Christ, be all glory. I want to address the topic about the books in the Lynchburg City Public Library. I'll reiterate what some of these other folks have already said, but I don't want to go ahead and repeat that I support them fully. These books promote the LGBTQ lifestyle, which actually leads to gender dysphoria and existential threat to our society, to harm life itself, and especially to our families and our children. The Bible clearly states in Genesis One, "So God created man in His own image. In the image of God created him; male and female created He them. And God blessed them, and said unto them, Be fruitful, and multiply, and replenish the earth." The question I have to ask the City Council is, why don't we have a library board to monitor the books we are exposing our children to? There should be a board that consists of citizens who have the best interests of our community at heart. I also would like to address another issue, and this is in reference to City Council members not following their own rules. On February 25th, Mr. Feraldi violated both City Council guidelines and my First Amendment rights to freedom of religion and speech. Lynchburg's own guidelines state council members are unable to engage in conversation with you, the ones who are providing public comment. Mr. Feraldi was upset that I used the word "abomination" to describe a situation, not individuals. He aggressively approached me and said that was uncalled-for. He then intentionally misrepresented what I said in my comments. The word "abomination" is not a term of personal attack, but a biblical truth. Scripture uses it to describe sins that separate us from God. The aim of this, there's at least 68 references to the word "abomination" in the Bible. These are things that grieve the heart of God. Because they lead people away from Him, Romans 1 speaks clearly on this, ending with verse 32, which says, "Who, knowing the judgment of God, that they which commit such things are worthy of death, not only do the same, but have pleasure in them that do them?" So the question I have here, does City Council have so little regard for its own rules and the Constitution of the United States that members can leave the dais on an impulse and accost citizens in an attempt to intimidate them because they disagree with the Word of God? If that is what you think of the position you hold, you are surely unworthy of it. My purpose in addressing council was to bring everyone's attention to that public funding is going to a perverse and moral organization and should not be permitted. This is a fight that every concerned citizen needs to get involved with. The alphabet people are attempting to destroy our society, our families, and especially our children. I think Mr. Feraldi owes us an apology, not to me, but to the citizens of Lynchburg. Let us not be intimidated, but remain steadfast in faith, speaking truth with boldness. I encourage my fellow believers to pray for our leaders and take a stand for what is right. I did not come here tonight merely to condemn, but I will conclude by offering the greatest hope any of us can have, the hope of reconciliation and salvation with God. John 3:16, "For God so loved the world that He gave His only-begotten Son, that whosoever believeth in Him should not perish but have everlasting life. For God sent not His Son into the world to condemn the world, but that the world through Him might be saved. He that believeth on Him is not condemned, but he that believeth not is condemned already, because he hath not believed in the name of the only-begotten Son." Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Chris.
Now I hear from citizen regarding library content, Alexandra Abbott. Somebody moving back there. Okay. Moving on. Hear from citizen regarding a citizen view of Finance Committee, Ms. Dr. Beth White.
Somebody stated that they didn't have my title on there, but thank you. Dr. Beth White, Ward Three, good evening. Mr. Mayor, Mr. Vice Mayor, members of council, I apologize for yawn. It has been a very long night. I want to say first that I am a conservative Republican who proudly stands in full support of Save Our Schools. I stand before you this evening to discuss a few remarks that were previously made by a fellow citizen, as well as questions that were asked by the Finance Committee Chair regarding the ability for two members of the Finance Committee to honorably serve without conflicts of interest. It was previously stated that both Dr. Wilder and Mayor, I mean, sorry, Councilwoman Reed, were asked if they served on the boards of their respective organizations and if those organizations received city funding. When both of them stated they were not on boards, at least one citizen complained that evening and demanded that audits be conducted as he had tax records that contradicted their statements. I would like to point out that when one looks at the website for the Jubilee Family Center, the Board of Directors is listed, but Dr. Wilder's name does not appear on it. Why? Because he is the executive director and has been for 27 years. Records will also show that while the Jubilee Family Center did receive funds from the CDBG, one time only in 2005, it was long before Dr. Wilder was elected to council in 2016. The same can be said for the Boys and Girls Club of Greater Lynchburg. Councilwoman Reed was named as the CEO on February 24th, 2025. When you review their website, the board members are all listed, but as you may know, the CEO works for the board, does not serve on the board. Any funds that may have been received in the past from the CDBG were all received prior to her appointment on February 24th. In fact, both organizations rely strictly on private donations for their funding. There is, however, a conflict of interest on the Finance Committee that is often overlooked and can be quite frequently the elephant in this room. It is a question that many in Lynchburg have wondered, and I know this because I get a lot of phone calls from people asking me this question. However, no one has had the courage to ask it publicly, so I'm going to do so now. According to both WSET and the News in Advance as of November and December 2024, Councilman Missions' lawsuit against the city in the amount of $450,000 is still being pursued. To date, this lawsuit has cost taxpayers quite a bit of money. So here are my two questions regarding conflicts of interest. First, does the Finance Committee Chair disclose the pending lawsuit when discussing about budget issues prior to committee meetings? Second, how can someone who is actively suing the city serve as the Finance Committee Chair and do so objectively? These are questions that I believe, as do many others in Lynchburg, would like answers to without shocking our tactics. Thank you.
Hear from citizen regarding our city, the people, Ms. Deborah Tosi.
My name's Deborah Tosi. I live in Lynchburg, Virginia. Good evening, members of City Council and all who are gathered here at this hour tonight. Buckle up, here we go. Our city has sports museums, theaters, universities, colleges, CBCC, walking trails, libraries, parks, community centers, fluff walk, the James River, our city market, restaurants, concerts, art galleries, community events, history, and so much more. But the heart of Lynchburg is the people. Approximately 79,720 people are living in Lynchburg. According to the U.S. Census Bureau demographic website, the ethnic city, excuse me, my mouth is a little tired, of Lynchburg's citizens consists of Hispanic, Latino, multiracial, Native American, Asian, Black, White, Native Hawaiian, and Pacific Islander people. They represent a vast array of religious and personal spiritual beliefs. You are representing all of these people, which is a daunting task. You are on this council because you had the majority of votes out of people who voted, but you are not just representing them, you're representing all the citizens of Lynchburg. As you walk into this chamber, you leave the world of national politics outside that door to focus on creating a preeminent city. You sit in those chairs, ready to vote for what benefits the present and future of all of the citizens. Please look at the city issues in a nonpartisan way to lay a foundation of growth and economic strength for our city, for all people living in Lynchburg. The City Council needs to cultivate prosperity and create a community that brings business into our city. City Council needs to strengthen our city by supporting our public schools, downtown, and community needs. This City Council has the ability to make our city better for all people. And now for a little side note to everyone on council and all of our citizens. Be a good listener, be kind, be respectful. Thank you.
Thank you. And now I hear from city regarding budget priorities, Mr. Peter Sepharati.
Good evening, City Council. I'm Peter Sepharati, Ward One. I'm here to address you today about an aspect of City Council, about how City Council is expected to perform its duties. I looked at the City Council webpage. It says Lynchburg has a City Council manager form of government. This combines the This combines the strong political leadership of elected officials and an appointed local government manager. This form of government establishes a representative system where all power is concentrated in the elected council. City council has a mission statement on that website that says their mission is to develop, to deliver services to city residents, workers, and visitors in an efficient, effective, and equitable manner and build a strong community. And it also has some really awesome values. It lists open communication, personal responsibility, integrity, and customer focus. I assume the public is the customer. Now, I want to talk about open communication. This is a great idea, but communication is not a one-way exchange of words. Communication consists of sending and receiving between parties. There has to be an improvement in your communication standard if you want to honor your value of open communication. Some recent examples of communication failure are, I got a bunch, but I'm just going to mention two. Late last year, there was an embarrassing dust-up surrounding a phone survey of council members polled about legal services being provided in a private lawsuit. Now, I'm only going on rumors here because, well, there's no communication. Many questions were asked about this, but the public, your customers, I assume, were not told what was going on. Instead, we watched what could only be described as a cover-up. At the last joint city council school board meeting, one school board member asked why city council chose to spend excess funds, that's a good one, on amphitheater instead of on school building repairs. Now, this is a great question, especially with all this talk about the school system and the buildings, et cetera. It should be answered to the taxpayers funding these projects. Who decided on these questionable spending priorities, I'd like to know? Where is the open communication? Now, I'm not bringing up these matters just to chastise you, because I'm not really, don't think that's going to accomplish anything, but I want to encourage you to do better for the benefit of Lynchburg's citizens and help us to have better relationships with each other. Honest communication will build trust, and your efforts here will be more rewarding for you and appreciated by us if there was more communication. I know you're working hard, please also work in a more enlightened manner. I think you'd be pleased with the results of that. All of us should be accountable to each other and participate in policies and actions taken to build a strong community, as your mission statement tells us. Some citizens might prefer to leave all that, all that stuff up to council and bureaucracy, and that's their choice. However, I hope that our city councils and staff respect those of us who believe that we have the right and the responsibility to be more involved in city matters. And I'm going to finish with this. With that in mind, I respectfully ask you to let us into the boardroom. Perhaps you're heard that if you're not sitting at the table, you're probably on the menu. And I want to thank you for listening, thanks.
Thank you, sir. Hear from citizen regarding Lynchburg Public Library, Gina Sosa. Could you please restate your name and locality, please?
Yes, my name is Jenna Sosa, and I am from Ward Four. Thank you for allowing me to speak this evening. I received my bachelor degree in the science of nursing, and I'm currently a homeschooling mother. I'm speaking to you tonight to raise awareness and voice concern on behalf of many intentional families from our city and surrounding counties. I am voicing concerns about books made available to our children at the Lynchburg Public Library that promote concepts of gender fluidity and LGBTQ plus ideologies. I have borrowed a small sampling of books that illustrate the subject of my concerns. Be Amazing, A History of Pride by Desmond is amazing. The book begins, "Hi, my name is Desmond, I am a drag kid and LGBTQ advocate." The pronoun book is a nonfiction picture book recommended for ages five and up, and in it, a little child defines non-binary using illustrations as well as other LGBTQ plus The book Rick by Alex Gino follows a protagonist transgender middle-school child. Rick deals with homophobic best friend and receives affirmation at the school spectrum club. There are books found in the youth section of our library that have an unmistakable bias towards LGBTQ values, and I am bringing this to your attention because they are being put on display and made available for any child to read while in the library without the knowledge or consent of their informed guardian. This, by definition, is indoctrination. Indoctrination is the process of teaching a person or group to accept a set of beliefs uncritically. Elementary-aged children are unable to think critically about abstract concepts such as gender fluidity. And it isn't until middle school until their brains are capable of using logic and reasoning on tangible objects. Many of these books direct impressionable minors towards gender-affirming care, which in many cases lead to irreversible medical interventions. These books ignore the potential for permanent damage to one's future sexual and emotional health. They ignore a growing population of detransitioning individuals who are suffering emotionally and physically after surgeries and stopped hormonal therapies. Where is their representation? Do I think, my closing thoughts are, do I think LGBTQ plus identifying members, should they have these books if desired? Yes. Do I want my child, who is not yet able to think critically about abstract social issues, accessing these books independently? No. Do I want my taxpayer money buying books based on controversial ideology? No. Thank you very much.
Now hear from citizen regarding Lynchburg City Schools, Ms. Sarah Beck.
Good evening, city council, community members, friends. My name is Sarah Beck, I'm an associate professor of psychological and cognitive science at Randolph College, and also Lynchburg City Schools' parent of two. I earned my doctorate in developmental psychology from Vanderbilt University in Nashville, Tennessee, and I actually came here tonight to speak specifically as a child development professional about prioritizing essential funding for our city schools. But I shifted gears a little here in the last few hours. I actually want to speak on behalf of books. I want to speak on behalf of stories, of characters, that we will never know in real life, but that we encounter in books. When we read, we climb into another person's perspective. Sometimes we see ourselves and our emerging identities reflected. In books, we find at the public library. We don't need a special board to look for obscenity in our library books. The Holocaust was obscene. Slavery was obscene. It's there in our history, our books, our stories, and we don't need to censor books or limit their availability. What we need to do is talk to our children about the books they're reading. When you find a book that doesn't suit your family's values, talk to your kids about it. Y'all are up here like your toddlers are reading these books by themselves. Talk about your values, ask your children what they think. Ask them what they're encountering. Ask them who they're encountering and the questions about the world that they live in. Whether you like it or not, queer community, gender fluidity, and inclusion are not going anywhere. The world of our children will include these things. It's changing out there, y'all. And for me, I hope that every child in Lynchburg goes to the library and sees a little bit of themselves reflected in a book that they can find there. When my children find books with characters that I don't, that are making decisions or have values that I don't agree with, I talk to them about it. We don't remove stories, we don't need to remove characters, and we certainly don't need to remove books. I want to end with a James Baldwin quote that I love that begins, "The children are always ours, every single one of them." This, to me, is the heart of the matter. May every child who lives in Lynchburg see themselves in a story that they find at the public library. Thank you for your time.
Hear from a citizen regarding the library, Carly Schaefer.
Hi, hello. I am Carly Schaefer, Ward Four. I was born and raised in Lynchburg, I chose to move back here after college because it was where I wanted to settle. I work here, I have a family here, and three children in Lynchburg City Schools. This is home. Some of you seem intent upon defunding, thereby destroying, what makes Lynchburg a great home, including our schools and services. I've been here before, asking you to keep tax rates functional so we don't gut our city, our growth, and our schools. I've written against the hateful discords that belittles our neighbors and dehumanizes our friends, specifically our LGBTQ plus community members lately. I've asked you a lot to fund our public schools. Research proves that cities who fund public schools thrive economically. To attract good teachers and staff, we need better pay. Our kids should be receiving hands-on, quality learning in safe and maintained spaces. You are the purse strings that provide these crucial factors of successful education. For God's sakes, fund our schools fully. Now, here I am again, as the library needs renovation and support, and I believe they are worth it. Yes, the library holds books, which some of y'all might try reading, but there's more. I grew up at that library, a few minutes from our house, at Home Among the Shelves, where I'd pick out my books, my brothers and I attending all the programs they offered. It shaped us. Now, full circle, the library is a staple in my children's lives. All three of them went to Storytime from six months on, and when folks ask where we met some of our best friends, we answer, "At the library." It's a magical place of connection, acceptance, community, where caregivers and kids can interact with each other, not for a two-hundred-per-session fee like most activities. It's an early childhood developmentally positive program that is free. There aren't barriers for learning or for connections. We need more of this, not less. However, I'll tell you, the library, like the shelves, carpet, space, has not changed since I was a little girl over thirty years ago in what my kids call the nineteen hundreds. For our city to keep growing, we need to maintain and update its treasures, and the library is long overdue. The space is crucial to our community. Kids do clubs like chess and find a quiet table to study. Access to reading helps them develop language, creativity, problem-solving, and increase concentration and discipline. And adults have access not only books, but computers, Wi-Fi, scanning and faxing, tax and law guides, audiobooks, and more. Ask the nearly five hundred daily patrons if these services matter. You see, if you don't have access to something, the road stops there. The library gives everyone access to information, community, and learning. I know there is no good reason anyone on this dais wouldn't want their citizens to be informed, engaged, and empowered. Only the bad guys in history tried to diminish their people's access. Don't take my word for it, you could actually read some history books on why this matters so much. I bet the library has a few. Fund our schools, fund our library. Thank you.
Hear from a citizen regarding the importance of our library, Ms. Maggie Millard.
I'm Maggie Millard, I live in Diamond Hill. There's a long list of things that I feel compelled to come talk to city council about. I never expected that the library was going to be one of them, but here we are. One of this evening's earlier speakers posted an image on Facebook of picture books from the library that he finds offensive. Those books included titles like Being You, Our Skin, Good Night Racism, We Care. A library should be reflective of its community, and I'm proud he was able to find those books at ours. Libraries keep a ton of data on which books are checked out, and they remove books from circulation if no one's checking them out. That means that if these books are in our library, there's a demand for them. There's a demand for Anti-Racist Baby, so much so that apparently they keep seven copies of it. Our earlier speakers have pointed out a lack of opposing views. I have to wonder if that's because they're hoping to find Racist Baby? The opposing view people are looking for is the standard view in children's books. You take a biracial family, it's got fifty children's books of white families. You take a non-transitioning, gender-fluid child, ninety-nine percent of children's books have the opposing view. Like, this is not controversial. If there's a book in the library that an individual doesn't like, it's not the role of the government to fix it for them. Parents should be supervising their children in public spaces and should be making decisions about what their children read. My kids didn't read their own Anti-Racist Baby, they certainly didn't check it out themselves. There are plenty of the books at the library that are not aligned with my views, social, political, religious, moral, so many. I don't come asking people to remove those books from circulation. I don't check them out. And if my kids find them at the library, we talk about it. Having the same conversations I'm going to be having with my ten-year-old, who was out front before this meeting, passing out Free Rainbow buttons, and got some pretty rude responses from the people in this audience. Opposing viewpoints, I knew it would happen, I brought her to the meeting, I wanted her to encounter opposing viewpoints so that we could talk about it. That's what you do. You don't remove them from circulation. I was shocked to see so much chatter about the libraries in the last week, because libraries are actually really popular with voters in both political parties. I'm going to scroll down here. The community's best preschool learning place is at the library. The amount of time spent reading to children in the first five years of life is directly correlated with academic achievement. Libraries are a place for the community to gather for stories. Libraries help people get jobs. Libraries provide internet to people who don't have it at home. You want to reduce unemployment, you want to improve schools, you want to improve test scores, you want to increase our local economy, the library needs the full funding that they are requesting in order to make that happen. Thank you.
Hear from a citizen regarding city services, Ms. Jan Willinger.
Thank you, good evening, Mayor Taylor, city council. My name is Jan Willinger. And to be honest, I came here to talk about book banning, because I heard the horrid news that we might be looking at book banning in the city, but after hearing some of our speakers tonight, I really decided to address the underpinnings of that book banning, and that is the fact that the erroneous belief that anyone's religion has any bearing on city governance. This is a separation of church and state. This is a principle that is vital to the protection of religious freedom and also to the health and functioning of our community. Let's remind you, the separation of church and state is enshrined in our First Amendment to the Constitution, which ensures that, quote, "Congress shall make no law respecting an establishment of religion or prohibiting the free exercise thereof," end quote. This creates a pretty clear boundary that no law, that there's a boundary between religious institutions and government institutions, safeguarding the right of individuals to practice their faith freely without government interference, while also protecting nonbelievers from imposition. While this principle is often seen in national discussions, it's equally important on the local level. Now, I'm going to guess that Lynchburg specifically is predominantly Christian, and I fully support every Christian to practice their faith and live it as they see fit. I also support every Jew, every Muslim, and every person who chooses not to have a faith that they follow. But lately, we've been hearing from more fetish citizens who feel their personal faith should somehow dictate our city's actions. Even some city council members have spoken as though their personal faith should impact decisions they make on behalf of our city. So I humbly suggest these folks go back and reread the Constitution. I want to emphasize, it isn't about diminishing religion or restricting the practice of faith, it's about ensuring that our government remains neutral and fair to all, regardless of a religious affiliation. It's critical for our local government to maintain clear boundaries between faith and public policy. Doing so not only respects individual freedoms, but also strengthens our commitment to serve all. So I ask that this council take proactive steps to ensure that the separation of church and state is upheld and state is upheld in every decision and action, large and small. Thank you.
Now hear from a citizen regarding library consideration. Marge Brown.
Good evening. My name is Marge Brown, I live in Lynchburg. Libraries offer books which can challenge our current knowledge and our current beliefs. Books are the bringers of ideas, different philosophies and perceptions. They open the window of our mind and they let light in. They enlighten us. Libraries represent universes of knowledge accessible to everyone. I give thanks to all the programs encouraging young readers, even toddlers, to come to storytelling, to get young people, our future, to use the libraries, get used to coming to the libraries. Libraries are a place where everybody can use books for free. We must guard against control of limiting information, which is what Jeff Bezos is attempting to do. 10 years ago, he battled the Library of Congress because his insatiable greed wanted to sell only the books which would bring him the most profit. Even though people had contracts with Amazon eBooks, he decided unlawfully to change those contracts. Bezos successfully positioned Amazon as the middleman of retail, putting hundreds of mom-and-pop businesses out. He is starting, in a small way, to whittle away libraries, position himself as the middleman of information. He must be stopped. He knows how to get around all the laws. Books are a way we grow and evolve as a society. When we read different opinions, it opens our minds and it lets light in. Books safeguard our psychological history. We're in a time of great evolution and expansion. We need libraries to encourage all of us to innovate, create, and evolve to higher states of consciousness. This is the time we're in. Any control of information is going to make the U.S. lag behind. The gross domestic product of the United States is 27 trillion. China is nipping at our heels at 19 trillion. Did you know that 10% of the top, the top 10% of Chinese students are more than all the students in the United States? This is a time to broaden and not narrow information. Let the content and the library offerings remain. They offer light to the mind. Let there be light.
Hear from a group representative regarding the support of council keeping library renovations a priority in the CIP this budget cycle. Ms. Ellen Nygaard.
Thank you very much. Good evening, and I don't know about any of you, but it's two hours past my bedtime. So I'm going to read my comments. I'm also passing out a copy of them, because it has a lot of figures. My name is Ellen Nygaard. I reside at 65 Clopton Court in Lynchburg, Virginia. My husband, Tom, and I have lived in the city for about 40 years. We raised our children here, had careers, and though presently retired, we remain active in our community. I stand before you, is something going on? Well, if it's a joke, we all ought to be in on it, right? Okay. Can I go again? Okay. I don't want to be that long. But I stand before you tonight representing the Friends of the Library. The Friends of the Library is a nonprofit partner of the library with a longstanding history of collaboration with the city. The Friends was formed 60 years ago with the express purpose of founding the city's public library, a library to serve all citizens. The Friends has remained actively involved in supporting the mission of the library. This mission is to promote literacy and advocate sustainable growth of library services to meet the needs of all the people of our city. Let me share with you some statistics for the past year. Our collection is over 70,000 physical books and materials. We have 225,000 physical items circulated, 98,000 digital items circulated. We logged over 150 individual visits. We have had 16, almost 17,000 computer sessions used on our Bill Gates Computer Lab. Total library programs were actually 250, and the attendance for those was 7,300. Youth programs were 227, with the attendance of 6,300. Lunch program served 1,400 children in our city throughout the summer, and 486 people participated in the summer reading program. We have 18,000 citizens who have library cards, and I would like anybody tonight who doesn't have a library card to come get one, and those who have them, raise your hand and say yes.
Yes!
Yes. We have had 86 non-public organizations or non-civic organizations use our meeting room, and we don't keep attendance figures on that. And lastly, I would like to share that we have 103 volunteers who have worked 2,877 hours in our library. As you can see by the figures, the library is important, well utilized for our citizens and adult, children and alike. Friends urged and request that you fully fund the library renovations this year in the CIP. The $11.1 million for the 2026 budget is looking to be on there, and we would like you to keep that. And we would also like you to then follow through with the $1.4 million in the 2027. The library needs structural repairs and infrastructure renovation to support engineering technology, emerging technologies, as well as a refreshing facelift to inspire its patrons. Modernized library facilities will attract more visitors, support workforce development through access to technology and job resources, and connect citizens to community services in a cost-effective way. With your investment in the library, we continue to serve as a hub for lifelong learning, for small business growth, digital literacy, and all of these things contribute to a stronger economy. Investing in our library is a critical step to supporting the educational path of our youth. Libraries serve as hubs where children can access books, technology, and enrichment activities that might not be available in the homes of all of our citizens. Research consistently shows that early literacy and exposure to books are key predictors of academic success. Libraries help bridge the gap by offering resources that reinforce learning outside of the classroom. We believe that an investment in our library and our children's education is an investment in the future. So in closing, I would like to say that it's a good thing to have a wonderful library in our city. It brings people here, and it keeps people here. And I would like to offer any of you who haven't been to come and get a tour, and if you don't have a card, if you can get one. Very easily at the front desk.
Hear from a citizen regarding the Lynchburg Public Library, Jennifer Wims.
Thank you. I'm Jennifer Williams, I live in Lynchburg in Ward Four. I love public libraries. I love libraries so much that when I go on vacation, I go to the local library. I get stomachaches, because I get so excited about going to the library. Libraries are where I meet some of my very best friends, both real and literary. My friend Lisa would read about skiing winters and winter sports while I hung out with the little women of the March family, Mary Lennox in her secret garden, and the sensible Eleanor Dashwood. The library allowed me to visit faraway places and learn about other cultures. In short, it prepared me to be able to function in the world. I love that libraries provide enough choices that every member of our community can find something that interests them, yet never endorses any single point of view. I love that the library understands that parents and guardians are the biggest and most important influences in a child's life. I've heard people complain about certain books available at the library, claiming that their children are being indoctrinated just by seeing a book cover they find offensive. Differing views are not the same as indoctrination. Being offended is not the same as indoctrination. I read a book about communism, but I'm not a member of the Communist Party. Five of my family members are gay, but not single one of them became gay by reading a book, I asked. Parental choice goes hand in hand with parental responsibility. As a parent, I love that the library does not presume to parent my children for me. They demonstrate respect for me as a parent by expecting me to make my own choices as to what I feel is appropriate for my family. When my children are asked to check out books that I do not feel are appropriate, I simply explain why they can't have the book and put it back. I make that choice for my family, and I would never be so rude as to force my choice on other families. If you don't approve a book, then don't check it out. But no one has the right to deny me or my family the opportunity to read what we want. Also, the library's pretty awesome. If there's a book that you want, ask them, and they will order it for you, and they will get it in the library for you to read. Our library is truly an amazing place. It's staffed with professionals who care deeply about our community. They deserve our respect and our support. I hope you can see the library for the truly wonderful place that it is, and I'm asking that you respect the rights of all Lynchburg residents and uphold the First Amendment by refusing to ban books, which includes making books unavailable for people to read. Very quickly, I'm going to also ask that you fully fund the school. My kid had a rat run over his foot, and he also saw a coyote in the basement of EC Cars. Thank you.
We now hear from a citizen regarding the return to common sense values, Chris Quigg.
Chris Quigg, Ward Three. And I know it's been a long night, so thank you for listening. Today is actually my 35th wedding anniversary, and I just want to give a shout out to my wife. Happy anniversary, Mrs. Quigg. She couldn't be here tonight. And sometimes we joke that we have fought our way to a better marriage, and there's some truth in that. But the greater truth is that, and why we still have and we do have a very strong and stable marriage, is because, like the pilgrims, the founding fathers, and so many in our nation before us, our main purpose in life is to bring glory to God and to live out the Christian faith. It's easy to say, yet always a battle, but very worth it. Our first public schools in this nation were formed to teach our children to read so that they could read the Bible. Today's public schools are failing because they are no longer connected to God, the Bible, and the Christian foundation established for us. They have been reduced to simply teaching to the SOLs. And I don't say this lightly, because I've been a special ed teacher and I'm currently a teacher assistant. I've been a part of Lynchburg, Halifax County, Bedford County, and also schools in Connecticut for the last 25 years. So I see it firsthand. Our public library is being filled up with LGBT books, and this too shows just how far we have separated from God and our Christian roots. I appreciate that we start these meetings with prayer and with the pledge, and that each of you is a professing Christian, and I ask you to lead accordingly. Psalm 11:3 says, "When the foundations are being destroyed, what can the righteous do?" Two things we've already heard tonight: establish a library board and clean up our public library. And second, a financial audit, so that the people will know how every dollar is being spent. I think that's very important. Patrick Henry, voice of the revolution, said, and I quote, "It is natural to shut our eyes against a painful truth, but I am willing to know the whole truth and act as it demands." And I trust this council will not shut its eyes to things, what's really going on in our schools, and also the foundational problems, not just the building foundation, but our beliefs, what's going on in our public libraries, and also what our citizens need in terms of a financial audit. So I appreciate you listening. Thank you very much.
We now hear from a citizen regarding the public library, Ms. Earl Kalathean. Please, Ms. State Attorney, manual call, please.
Sarah Kalathean, Ward One. Mayor, Vice Mayor, council members, thank you for your service. I know it's not easy representing everyone. I've lived in Lynchburg 25 years. I love libraries, too. Yes. Yes, I do. I love the Lynchburg Library. I took my children there when they were growing up. We checked out books, we attended fun events. This is not about that. I wouldn't be here. It's not fun confronting things. What I want to address is a gradual change in the content of the books made available on the physical and digital shelves to our children. This is about our children. Others have discussed content geared towards the very young, which should be concerning. I want to highlight my concern regarding books for middle readers and young teens. We know there's a mental health crisis amongst our young people. We all agree that a library should be a storehouse of wisdom, precious riches and treasures, beautiful books, classics. Instead, much of the content found in the pre-teen teen section has an aggressive ideological tone, ideologies being peddled on our children. It's about representation, it's not about censorship. It's that if we activated the parents and we told them what was happening, there would be a lot more here. We don't want to have to do this. I have friends that say they don't go to the library anymore. So are we being represented? No, because there are no classic books, there are fewer and fewer and fewer. It's changed. I walked in, just quickly, to the teen section, just to do my own, didn't look up any titles, just what will I find? Easy, two minutes. Fools in Love by Rebecca Barrow. It's all about transgender love relationships. And I Googled this book online afterwards, and Danica commented, "Nowhere does it say it is a specifically LGBTQ anthology, but if you read Sapphic YA, you know you're in for a treat." That's my concern, is that you don't know what you're looking at when you check out a book. And young people are still figuring out who they are, and so there should be some kind of indication of what's in the book as they're checking it out. The parents begin to trust their children, they begin to let them go, and there are plenty of children that go to the library without parent oversight. So that's a lovely thought, but I'm concerned about those children. Yes, there are parents who are paying attention, but there are others who are not. There are children who don't have the luxury of that. I found another title, Becoming a Queen by Dan Clay, about a transgender young man, immediately. So what is the purpose of the public library? It should benefit the public, reflecting the values of the collective values of the taxpayers. So I'm only asking today, yes, I know, for this Virginia State Code 42.1-35, a library board to be established. That's all. It's been missing for 50 years. Thank you.
Hear from a group representative regarding the capital improvement program, Gary Taylor, Citizens for a Better Lynchburg. Mr. Taylor?
Ms. Smith, before I take the podium, I'd like to provide you with a couple things for pass out, please. That's the one from the email from this morning, and this will be my presentation. How you doing, Mr. Mayor?
How you doing?
Great to see you.
Good to see you, sir.
Hadn't seen you in a while. These are for y'all right here. Thank you. Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Congratulations on your mayoral appointment. Haven't seen you since then. Good evening, Mr. Vice Mayor. Congratulations on your victory in November. Ms. Timmer, congratulations on your victory in November. Rest of City Council, good evening, distinguished city staff. My name is Gary Taylor. I'm the founder and the president of the bipartisan group Citizens for a Better Lynchburg. I am the former unofficial mayor of Windhurst for seven years, and I'm currently the unofficial mayor of Gooch, Virginia for the last three years. We appreciate you coming down and seeing us there, Ms. Taylor. Hope you enjoyed your stay down there in Bedford for a little bit. So now I am going to focus mainly, you got one document that I sent to y'all this morning that I won't be here for, so that was just an email, so I just wanted to pass that along. Okay? So the purpose of tonight is about the CIP funds. Okay? So I want to make sure everybody understands the importance. So apparently, we're going to have $10 million for this coming year. So what my presentation is, is about the CIP funds, okay? And then, this is the most important thing for y'all, is the documents that actually talk about, we have six elementary schools that score in the 60s, and we have five elementary schools that score in the 70s. So we basically have 11 of our 12 schools that are in need of money. So the question for y'all is going to be, with the CIP funds, is going to be, do you put money in one school, or do you spread it across the district to get your best return on investment? So that's the main purpose of all this. So I wanted just to provide it for you, and it also has my presentation that I gave to the school board. So I just wanted to share that because I knew I would never get through it in the time allotted, but that's the main focus. But I do want to address a couple other things. Elected school boards, and it's kind of died down, but just to point out to people, you know, the two foundations of positive public education are elected school boards and school choice. They're absolute must. You know, Lynchburg is one of only 13 localities that doesn't have an elected school board out of 133. So we have to be very careful. So if you had had an elected school board, what you would have been able to do is, this body would not have to address the personnel situation that has happened in recent weeks on the school board, because they would be their own entity. So it's very important that they're a community within a community when you have an elected school board. So I would strongly encourage, I guess I'm going to take the mantle this year and try to get us on the agenda for an elected school board, and we'll see how that goes. But we would like support from the whole community, because it is vital for Lynchburg City Schools. And then my third thing is, I wanted to do this in public. I got Mayor Pastor Nigel prayed for me, but I wanted to personally apologize to Ms. Larkin and the Sandusky folks, okay, for me calling them Nazis. Okay? I did that, and it was out of frustration. You have to understand that for 10 years, we've been knowing that we needed to close schools. But I want to stand right here and say that that's not something I should have done, and we can do these things respectfully. So I have a difference of opinion on some things. Schools are going to have to close. That's just a brutal fact of reality. BFOR is what we call it. BFOR, brutal fact of reality. So please, keep that in mind when you're moving forward. Thank you.
Next session is general business. It includes new items for discussion. We have budget presentation from Mr. City Manager.
Budget presentation. Good morning, Mayor Vice- That was a joke. All right. Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, members of City Council. Just over three and a half years ago, my wife and I moved with our three daughters to the best city in the Commonwealth, Lynchburg, Virginia. Here I began my journey as city manager, committed to you then as now, to effectively and efficiently manage this municipal corporation with a strong professional team. These past few years have been some of the most fulfilling of my career, as together we have rolled up our sleeves to do the good, hard work of providing excellent services for our residents. This presentation marks a milestone in this year's budget process. This week and next, we will continue our public engagement with a series of events in each of your wards, with budget work sessions each week and public hearings on April 22. As I prepared for this evening, I thought back to when my wife and I made the decision to move our family to Lynchburg. I remember our visit to the city and the potential we saw here for remarkable progress and extraordinary advancement. In our choice to live, work, and raise our family here, I saw then what I see now, a city well positioned to grow. In fact, since we've been here, Lynchburg has grown, and in my estimate, that growth is good. Now, it'll take a few minutes to remind us where we've been. Let me share a couple data points that have resonated with me as I've prepared, or I've worked with you and my staff to prepare this year's budget. According to the American Community Survey, in the past 10 years, Lynchburg has experienced a 3.5% increase in population. Looking forward, Lynchburg is expected to continue on this trajectory, whereas the nearest cities are expected to see slight decreases. In the past 10 years and through global economic challenges, the city's unemployment rate has dropped overall, while our median household income has increased. During this same time, we've built a new high school, some bridges, a state-of-the-art police headquarters, plus several trails and playgrounds. We've also reimagined and as such, used what we have. We've also seen Lynchburg's property owners' wealth grow. Many have experienced growth in the value of their homes and land, growth on par or better with our peer cities, and services that compete with or even best those of larger Virginia cities. Upon this reflection and also assessing where we are, and then casting a shared vision for the future, I recommend that several of the bricks within the foundation of this progress is the unquantifiable but recognizable spirit of public service. What it takes, T-A-K-E-S, okay? To do the job, a good job, day in and day out. In my estimate, public service is more than a job, it is a calling. Out front, behind, even above and below the overall city, Team Lynchburg provides and processes the functions of our local government. They are called to and upon to afford outstanding municipal services that make a daily difference in the lives of our residents. In working with City Council, your priorities around public safety, infrastructure, economic development, lifelong learning, and quality of life are clear. They inform my team, shape our culture, enhance relationships with our citizens, and guide our decision-making. In the past year, our dedicated staff has leveraged your investments in public safety, securing $4.4 million in a safer grant to staff our newest fire station, and also implemented the vision for Lynchburg's first new police headquarters in more than a generation. Together, we've also continued meaningful pay progression for sworn police and fire personnel. We have moved the needle in improving the city's built environment, funding capital projects that address our most pressing infrastructure needs, and maintaining buildings, roads, and transportation assets. The Blackwater CSO Tunnel, a storage facility for combined sewer and storm water during heavy rain events, is the largest capital improvement project in the city's history. Our businesses continue to make expansion decisions because, make no mistake, Lynchburg is a good investment. Framatone has hired more than 100 of its 550 new employees. Centra is investing half a billion dollars in the modernization of its facilities. Last year, Delta Star completed a $30 million expansion, adding 80,000 square feet of manufacturing space and 155 new jobs. We also continue to lay the groundwork for industrial site development in Ivy Creek Innovation Park and the Airport Commerce Park. We have delivered on improving quality of life and lifelong learning, gathering the community together to reimagine White Rock Elementary School, beginning improvements to Heritage Park, and maintaining the rest of our city's parks and trails. A quick couple notes here. Team Lynchburg has been recognized for our efforts with awards, landing again in the top digital cities, I was pointing at you, Vice Mayor, because of the digital piece, and also to the top 100 best places to live. We opened a new branch of the Lynchburg Public Library, seeing visitors increase by 48% and circulation increases by 619% in just the first five months of operation. You have progressed in your efforts with Lynchburg City Schools, forming the City Council and the School Board Joint Committee to address maintenance and infrastructure needs in your support of public education. While accomplishing all of this, we have also instituted operational efficiencies for a more responsive government. This year, I've consolidated certain functions in two areas, one being information technology and the second communications, so as to eliminate duplication of efforts and ensure better alignment. I've reassessed emergency communications into the Police Department as a division, enhancing coordination and thereby improving response times. I've restructured custodial positions for operational efficiency and better starting pay, and began an analysis to consolidate pay bands for non-sworn employees. And Team Lynchburg does all of this while maintaining efficient and effective operations. They wake each and every day to deliver amazing municipal services at all levels. This is the spirit of public service, which in my estimate is a true calling. You will recall in early February, we held a retreat at the city's historic Point of Honor. You heard from our data analytics team about the services that our residents access each and every day across city departments. As a reminder, and for the public watching tonight, I wanted to share some of those highlights as a backdrop. Water Resources produces over 10.7 million gallons of clean drinking water and treats 12.3 million gallons of wastewater a day. Public Works collects on average 6,250 residential trash cans a day using only seven trucks. Last fall, Public Works collected 1,681 tons of leaves. A staff of 38 human services workers provide case management to more than 35,000 benefits cases each month, which equates to about 920 cases per worker. Four inspectors in community development complete an average of 59 building inspections per day. On average, seven permits are approved every day for new construction. And the Lynchburg Fire Department responds to an average of 48 non-fire calls a day and five related calls each week, fire-related calls each week, and with Fleet, keeping in service 12 medic trucks, 13 fire engines, and four ladder trucks. The list literally goes on and on. Bottom line here is Team Lynchburg serves all of the residents of Lynchburg 24 hours a day, 365 days a year. Now I will walk you through the fiscal year 2026 operating budget. Under local charter, I am tasked as budget commissioner to present by April 1st, each year a balanced budget where ongoing revenues meet ongoing expenses. As you may know, and Donna often reminds me, the city's annual budget process never truly stops. The moment we finalize one budget in a fiscal year begins, we immediately begin laying the groundwork for the next. Back in October, we provided our department heads with budget instructions to maintain a flat approach from fiscal year 2025 while accounting for the necessary inflationary and contractual increases. As we focus on operating expenses, we also have a parallel conversation about our capital improvement program, which is how we invest in the city's future infrastructure and address long-term needs and maintenance. Over the past several months, we've been working through this process, providing broad context at the budget retreat, engaging in one-on-one conversations, and together discussing both capital and operating needs. You've heard that we have seen inflationary increases and contractual escalations across the municipal corporation. Examples of areas that have seen the largest increases year over year are, one, employee and retiree healthcare; two, certain mandated social services expenditures; and three, our per diem cost at Blue Ridge Regional Jail, just to name a few. This year, we know that consumer taxes such as sales, meals, lodging, and amusement taxes are projected to be flat, to maybe even possibly decreasing. Growth in these revenues post-pandemic has been the key to keeping up with inflationary costs increases and City Council priorities. Without growth in these areas, we need to maintain current revenue sources or have discussions about the level of services we provide. I provide here a summary of the proposed fiscal year 2026 spending plan, which is comprised of the following funds: general, enterprise, special revenue, internal, capital, projects, and component units. And now, let me walk you through some of the highlights. The proposed budget continues our ability to provide the expected everyday municipal services in this inflationary environment. The budget maintains our investment in workforce recruitment and retention by providing for a 3% cost of living adjustment for general city employees, continued pay progression plan for sworn police and fire personnel, the local match for a 3% cost of living adjustment for Lynchburg City Schools adopted by the General Assembly, and one new full-time equivalent employee for sworn fire captain, pharmacy manager, fulfilling a statewide but unfunded mandate. This year, we will also work to positively impact one of our more vulnerable and important segments of our community, our seniors, by increasing the single income limitation and adding a dual-family category to maximize this important benefit for residents on fixed incomes. This initiative is expected to provide targeted senior disabled tax relief to approximately 1,300 of our residents. We once again are proposing a minimal rate increase in water, sewer, and storm water funds totaling $2.90 on the average monthly residential water bill. This is to develop and deploy the critical infrastructure necessary for clean water, safe disposal of waste, and to keep our commitments to our waterways and neighbors. As you heard on February 25th, the proposed five-year capital improvement plan includes $60 million for the school facility maintenance and infrastructure over the next three years, $12.5 million for renovation of the main branch of the Lynchburg Public Library, and $1.4 million to maintain and improve the Miller Park Pool. The Lynchburg Public Library serves 465 residents a day accessing over 4,000 books and materials. The library is housed in the renovated Sears &amp; Roebuck Building, built in 1958, and that became the city's library in 1984. That facility also experiences a leaky roof and bathroom backups. The Miller Park Pool is the city's only public pool facility, and it's leaking. Last year, we were almost unable to open the pool. Over the last two years, we estimate the deferred maintenance has lost nearly 800,000 gallons of water. For context, an Olympic pool is 660,000 gallons, and folks, that's money literally down the drain. This budget maintains our ability to live in a safe, affordable, and thriving community with parks, playgrounds, and events. These components are one of the most important, but perhaps the least tangible priorities of a prosperous city. Make no mistake, we have finite resources to meet what is an overwhelming complement of needs, not wants. This proposed operating budget and capital improvement program reflects our city's needs, and candidly, needs. Approaching this from a growth-informed perspective, we should remember that growth is good news, and because of good growth, your penny is worth more. In this budget, we have the capacity to make investments in people and projects and advance your priorities, investments that support our workforce and residents. your priorities, investments that support our workforce and residents, and continue Lynchburg's trajectory of good growth. In closing, I'm proud to stand before you tonight, leading a strong and capable staff, maximizing impact and prioritizing efficiency and ensuring the well-being of our residents. Your decision made, your decisions made at the local level have the most direct daily impact on Lynchburg's workforce and residents. Together, as we navigate this year's budget, I know we all hold in our minds our collective vision for a bright future for this amazing hill city. Again, this week and next, we will continue our public engagement around the budget with a series of Budget and Brews events in each of your wards. Three public hearings to receive citizen input on the real estate assessments, the water resources rate study, and the proposed budget are scheduled for April 22nd, beginning at 6:00 p.m. here in city council chambers. The proposed budget has been posted to the city's website along with the full budget calendar. Thank you for this continued opportunity to work with each of you, our workforce and residents. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yes.
If I may, we're going to get a copy of this budget? Can we get those passed out? And I'd like to ask some questions. What's the proposed real estate tax rate?
The proposed real estate tax rate is 81 cents.
So, so we're looking at a $12 million tax revenue increase on our real estate property owners, is that right? Roughly in that ballpark?
Each penny is worth about 900,000, so I'd have to do the math. If what you're doing is, are you equating that to what equalization may be? Is that where?
Correct. What is the equalization rate?
It's about, I'm hearing in my ear, I got a great, it's about 9.6.
9.6?
That's what I hear.
Cents to equalize?
9.6 million.
That's, if you're, if you're using equalization as the rate to go to, right, so it's between 77 and 78 is equalization, current tax rate is 89 is where I've proposed, and so doing subtraction, getting the pennies, and then adding 900,000, times by 900,000, then you get the?
It's about 9.
So we're looking at about a $9.6 million real estate tax increase then, is what it comes down to. I mean, if, if the revenues from real estate tax are going up, if we're taking more real estate taxes from our citizens, that is a tax increase.
In each year, in each year, I had this conversation, and it is something that's been new to me when I moved here. There was, I had dealt with and worked in a city who had had rates that were incomparable to what you see in the surrounding localities, and there was always the behemoth that was Virginia Beach, that a penny in Virginia Beach is...
A billion dollars.
Yeah, it's, it's pretty exorbitant. And, and that was obviously different in Norfolk or Suffolk, and so the rates themselves were always something you paid attention to, and there was outliers like Portsmouth that was at $1.36, 35, can't remember now, and then you had Virginia Beach. The conversation about equalization, because again, I'm not perfect with this, this is more of an assessor's, is the conversation of what it takes to provide same level of services, not contemplating inflation and/or contractual increases from the previous year. Do I have that right?
Close. Equalization is the rate at which the amount of real estate tax assessed would be the same from one year to the next.
And so where I think you're headed, Mr. Missions, or what I understand you saying is, there's a rate over here that two years ago was a rate that was reduced because we were at, when I first arrived, we were at $1.11 per 100. It was then reduced by 22 cents, because every two years, our assessments are reviewed by, it's bi-annual assessment, and so we're in that year, and so you've heard from Mr. Bandy, and so two plus years ago, the listed tax rate was $1.11, it was reduced to 89 cents, which at that time, equalization was 93 cents, right? So it went a couple pennies below equalization. But back to your original question, if I'm doing the math and I'm asking her for it, if, if what we're talking about is what you proposed as far as an increase, I want to use her number of 9.6.
9.6 million.
Yes, sir.
Yeah, because, because when I look at this, the memorandum that you guys sent us on March 4th, and I'm looking at these numbers, and this is something that Councilmember Wilder asked for, a median, single, he has to ask, what's the, what the average increase in real estate tax for a homeowner, and what you provided for a single-family detached household, with the new median property value, which, which keep in mind, we're two weeks behind, I know Deputy City Manager Patrick has shared with me, the mailing got messed up on getting those assessments out, right? The median increase?
The mailing service.
The mailing service.
The mailing service.
I want to make sure I got that right.
They will be mailed tomorrow, as we understand.
I hope we got a, I hope we got a discount. And so, so we're looking at an average increase essentially on a single-family house of $814 a year, right? And are we restoring trash fees?
No, we're not. Oh, wait, wait, wait.
Yes.
We have, oh, we do have that?
Yes. A $10 trash fee comes back.
Oh, well, restoring, I thought you were, in my mind, I was, whether or not we were waiving the fee associated with trash, that's what I, forgive me, it's 11:30.
It's okay.
Going on midnight, so, sorry.
I can go till 3:00 a.m. So...
Please, Lord.
So, so with that, we're putting $120 a year back on our citizens by restoring those trash fees. What about the DMV license fees, is that?
So if it's a lit, I think where I may know where you, I don't want to guess where you're headed, so the relief proposed in here, again, I think you heard about the senior disabled tax relief. What I heard from the collective of the DAS was that there was people who were on fixed incomes, and for all the reasons that you've talked about, because I think you brought up earlier kind of the increases that we're seeing in Dr. Wilder's war, because what you're finding is that some of the property values in certain areas, because it's a finite housing stock, and so what you've seen, because you've got to remember, and I know you know, I know each of you know this, that it's a two-year look at something, so it isn't just, if it were each year, because that's what we saw in a city that we used to work for, this is actually two years, so that increase, what you're, what you're listening to or hearing about is a two-year ago, right? And what that is looking at, because remember, I think Jeff says it pretty often in his presentations, he doesn't make the market, he follows it, and so what's happened is that good news, that growth that I talked about, that I feel is good, is that a rising tide raises all ships into where people haven't found maybe the house at the value that they've wanted, they've moved into some of the neighborhoods and began some of the redevelopment that I think you talked about, and maybe others, that have increased values to where, where we've seen some.
And, and I think I've also shared with you that, in the same time, because I live very close to the Campbell County line, right?
Sure.
The same exact house, year after year, when the city raised taxes or didn't equalize, right, and not equalizing as a tax increase, that those values increased in the county while our values in the city remain flat. So, we're going to stagnate those values if, if, if we leave the tax rate the same. So, so growth, you know?
And what I, and I get to big, a big title that I was given is the Budget Commissioner component, and what I attempt to do, and it's not always perfect, and what I try to attempt to do is to understand where the seven of you are wanting to go.
Sure.
And then I take into account, I think I told you, what was it, public safety, infrastructure, quality of life, economic development, and?
Lifelong learning.
Lifelong learning. I used the transportation earlier, that's infrastructure, same. And envelop underneath there with the resources that we have, because I also reassessed into my presentation that where we are because of the good growth, the penny when I first started here was just over $600,000. And that has, if it, if it sounded like it was anything because I moved here, anything was not about that, it was, we moved here because this place is fantastic. And I think what we've seen is an interest, because when you live here, this is the only city for 50 miles, and when you live here, the expectation, when you live in a city, is that you receive services that are incomparable with a city similarly situated. And so when we look at our most immediate apple, if we look to our surrounding counties, I don't know if that gets it, I think that we have to look up the road to Roanoke or over to Charlottesville, maybe to Danville is making some, making some strides as well, and Harrisonburg as well. And so, what I attempt to do, Mr. Missions, in this is to understand where each one of you are coming from and what, what we're wrestling with, and I heard pretty poignantly about fixed incomes, what I was heard of, pretty poignant over the last seven years is the investment we've made in public safety. Donna Witt told you at the, at the retreat, for all the right reasons, we have made tremendous investments in public safety, and they have borne fruit. The investments we've made have increased the expenses in that area quite a bit to where it takes the necessary revenues that we're, that we're, that we are capturing to be able to afford the services associated with those. And so if we begin to think through the, the value of our penny, I really think, one, it's, it's gone up, which is fantastic, and two, I think we're getting pretty good, pretty good services for it.
So, the question I have, so we're bringing back trash fees, are we bringing back the DMV license fee as well? And that's 39.50 or 43.50, depending on?
And you don't even get a sticker anymore with it.
No, but I'm saying, we're, we're bringing back, it's like 39 to 43.
But you remember when the motor vehicle license fee was 35?
And that's an annual, that's an annual thing, is that correct?
That's correct.
So, so, so what we're looking at then is, we got an average increase on a single-family home of $813 a year, plus, if you get one trashcan, there's another 120 on top of that, so we're looking at $933, and if you have two vehicles, then, you know, you're at a thousand bucks. So, what I'm, what, the way that I'm thinking?
Sure.
Right, is, is that we're looking at a $1,000 on average tax and fee increase on our single-family occupants, and that's not even touching the, the water rate increase, right? So, that's the question I have.
Sure.
And I, and I think is that, would that be accurate to look at it that way, based on this memo that says 813.91, plus the trash fees, 120 for a year, is that right, Mr. Patrick?
I'd be, I'd be careful to say whether or not my name is Winter Christian Bendet almost midnight, so as far as accuracy, we can certainly vet this, and that's what this budget reconciliation is. So tonight, it's my opportunity to present the budget, I met with each one of you one-on-one, tried to avoid any kind of surprise, make sure that you're prepared, understand where we are, had a budget retreat to give you the context, and then the good news is, we have, we have quite a few, and there was, if you can bring back the budget calendar?
And, and...
And while doing so, so there are plenty, plenty of opportunities to walk through all these questions, and these will be ones that we will address.
And for me, because the budget presentation was tonight?
Yes, sir.
I want to make sure Mr. Hand, for the news and advance, sitting right there, understands that there's a $1,000 increase to single-family homeowners on average, that that's, that needs to be put out there.
And, and what I would offer is maybe our opportunity as staff to kind of unpack, which is, because where I would go just a little bit, is that $10 fee that we charge for trash doesn't even begin to touch what it costs to collect trash. You heard, was it 6,200-something tons of trash, 1,650 things of leaves out front of Greg's house, and with, with seven trucks, right? And so in all that, I think there was a rate study that was done several years ago, which at this point is dated, and that the value or the cost associated with collecting trash then was about, and I know Gayle, and I'm not going to hold her to it, but it's $25...
Thank you for answering all my questions, but I appreciate it.
Okay, well, but the context, I just want to, if we're offering elements or aspects to this, there are things that we have subsidized out of the general fund over the years to ensure that we can meet the services necessary. And so in some of this, it is, I think, these opportunities to have the conversations to say, because you, you brought up trash, and we were able over the last couple of years, thankfully, to kind of give a certain relief, with that same thing with motor vehicle license, we just couldn't sustain it in this environment with the other things that you were interested. So, I've answered your question, and thanks for the questions.
Thank you, sir.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Okay, and moving on. Consideration of adopting a resolution amending the future land use map and adopting an ordinance approving and rezoning and adopting a resolution approving a conditional use permit to allow construction of 18 townhomes, one duplex, and associated parking at 3142, 3146, and 3150 Ward's Road, Ward's Ferry Road. This item was tabled from our January 14th meeting. Mr. Martin?
Yes, sir, Mayor, Vice Mayor, I think you gave a very good overview of what the petition was. Just to remind Council, this is at Ward's Ferry Road and Copley Place, it was tabled back in January due to traffic concerns. Very briefly, staff went back, met internally, discussed any kind of possibilities that could be done to address the traffic. We then met with the engineer for the developer, requested them look at potentially moving the, the entrance further down to that triangular piece, they looked at that, and it did not meet the site distance requirements. So, really where we are is back at where we began, which is, if Council wishes to move this forward, the best case scenario for traffic safety is that directional median in Copley Place to only allow right in and right out.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything else you have?
No, sir.
Mr. Mayor, I am, based on the new information we got in this traffic impact narrative, I'm going to make a motion to deny.
Do you have a second? We want to speak to you.
Yes, sir, Mr. Mayor, thank you very much. So, we, we received the traffic impact narrative on this, and it's showing the daily and peak hour traffic volumes that this will create, that's not the big concern, but what I have concern about is the, the line of sight issue here, and it's, in summary, the proposed project will increase traffic on Ward's Ferry Road and assessing the addition of a left-turn storage lane and a right-turn paper lane, is what this says. However, the entrance is not recommended due to inadequate site distance to the left, which could impact traffic safety. So that's exactly what it says in this traffic impact narrative. I spoke with both of the building principals at Heritage High School and Heritage Elementary School, and confirmed that there are students that use that crosswalk from both schools to walk across Ward's Ferry Road to get to school. I've spoken with somebody who lives at Aaron Place down the road, it's, the line of sight distance there is very difficult. There comes a point when you put too much in too small of a spot, and that's what this just comes down to, that, that it creates, I, I don't know any other way to explain it, but it's, it's just, it's too much density in too small of a spot. I'm not comfortable with the line of sight issues right there with the double curve in, in Ward's Ferry Road, and I've heard some, from, from some of my constituents that don't want to see this happen. So, that's why I've got a motion to deny.
Mr. Dean?
Mr. Mayor, this is Ward 3, my ward, and I've spent a little time out there with the developer. First, I want to thank the developer for taking the time to go out with me and watch the traffic. I went out additional time after that to see what the school traffic was like, we watched the rush hour. Ultimately, I came to the conclusion at the end, as I kept getting more information, more calls from my constituent, that as, as much as I'd like to see this turn into something useful, we've tried to make it business, that hasn't flown. This has got all kinds of issues that are potentially issues, but the biggest thing to me came down to public safety, and especially the proximity to our kids in the public schools, and that's why I'm seconding to, to deny this particular development. I hope someday we figure out something for that spot, and I certainly hope we get an opportunity to work with the developer, he's, he's, he's done his best, I think, to, to make this attractive to us, but in my mind, it really did come down to, to safety issue for citizens, and that's, that's pretty high priority on my books.
Ms. Ray?
I think it's ironic that in this situation, that we've been talking about multiple times, and you've come back several times, and we've given you opportunity now to do what you wanted, needed to do and come back, and I would love to be able to approve it. I'm going to maintain my same reasons for saying no to the three-hour discussion we had earlier tonight, that we had over 300 people really, if you took from the petition that was signed and emails and calls that we got from citizens, over 300, that did not agree with the safety issues and the traffic issues of that development. I've only heard from like one on this personally. I know it's not my, the ward I reside in, but I do represent this ward as well as an at-large, so I've only had one person. With that said, it seems that safety is a concern for this project, and that the citizens that are represented in this ward are a concern to my colleagues, but the 300 that spoke against our previous project were not. I just want that noted for the record, I'm sorry... I'm sorry that I cannot approve it, but I will maintain that the same concerns are a concern here. I apologize for that. Wish you the best, and I hope something else can be done with the property. But I'm just maintaining the same reasons, I can be fair, okay?
Mr. Farady.
I'm also, I, good morning, Mr. Mayor. I'm confused. Too much in this spot? We just approved 700-plus units in a very condensed area on a single-lane road that was built in the '40s, and now we're saying that this is too much in one spot. Did this guy not donate enough? Like, that's where I'm at now. I don't understand it, guys. I mean, this makes no sense to me. I mean, you're talking about safety concerns in this one, but then you willfully go ahead with the other. I just, we're walking a very fine line. I mean, like, we can't, the city can be sued for this kind of a thing. If we don't make, like, have a clear process and precedence we maintain when it comes to zoning, this whole corridor, whether you like it or not, has been put into this category where there is multi, it's so late, I forget the term, multi, multiple homes on one lot, not single-family. Thank you, multifamily. There's, it's all throughout. We just approved another one down the way on Leesville Road, 88 homes, if a memory serves. I like how I can remember that, but not multifamily. Guys, I don't get it. I think we're opening ourselves up to real big legal problems, and if I'm the developer, I'd be right pissed off that this council jerked him around for a few months. He went out of his way to secure a traffic study of some sort, exactly what I said would happen, only for us to then turn around and deny him anyway. I hope it still counts for this year's tax season, because that's one big write-off. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Mr. Wild. Okay. Well, I mean, I do have concern with the traffic, as I stated the last time. So how many, how many units can they deal on the site with the current zoning? I can't remember that part.
So, Dr. Wild, I don't have the exact numbers, but the majority of that property is zoned B1, which would only allow residential units by conditional use permit.
Okay.
So, very few.
Okay. All right, thank you, appreciate it. Ms. Timmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. On this particular project, I've gone back and forth a number of times, and the discussion has been traffic. And I know there's reference to the Wiggington property and traffic. There are timeline distinctions and a number of other distinctions in that regard. But in this particular project, the main issue is line of sight. And so if you don't have that line of sight with entrance and exit, yeah, please.
The line of sight is, excuse me, my name is Norm Walton. I represent the developer of Perkins and Orson. And I want to make sure that we're clear on the line of sight issue, because that seems like to be the tripping point. The line of sight in the traffic narrative that I provided to city about a month or so ago was regarding the proposed entrance off of the triangular piece that's in yellow, not Copley Place. So when we were, when we were meeting with the city, we had an alternative to put an entrance, is there any way we can get to the aerial?
Which one are you looking at, sir?
The aerial.
The GIs.
That one right there? Yes.
Does that work?
Kind of, yeah. You can see it.
Can you move it quicker?
Has this got a pointer?
No, sir.
Well, in the triangular property, there's a blue pointer or a blue icon, and right below that icon is an entrance. I think you can see the curb cut there. So that is the point to where we analyzed the line of sight, because that was the second option for an entrance, not Copley Place. So Copley Place has site distance. The point right below that blue marker does not. I just want to make sure you guys are crystal clear on that before we make a vote. Thank you.
The other comment that I would make with that, because I still have the floor, is my concern has consistently been the pork chop and the ride-in, ride-out. And I thought that in this two-week discussion, there would be an adjustment to that ride-in, ride-out situation, and that has stayed consistent. My focus initially was on egress from the location and not the entrance into the location. And so with the ride-in, ride-out, I do not see that as solving the problem, as well as the left turn with its proximity to Timberlake, and that can't be adjusted. So those were my other traffic concerns that are not able to be addressed. And the stand, or, I'm losing my terms too, Mr. Farady. Being able to table, not stand, but table, the last tabling, my understanding, was to try and address some of those initial concerns that were still there and remaining earlier. So those still remain. Thank you.
Right. Is there any more discussion? No more discussion.
Mr. Mayor, just a quick clarification for the minutes, is the motion to deny the whole petition?
Yes.
Okay. All right, initiating the vote now.
My software is updating as well.
The motion passes 4-3.
We have a motion on an ordinance approving the rezoning for the same project.
That was, the motion was to deny the whole.
Oh, and not the whole?
Yeah.
You're steering me wrong, sir.
Sorry, sorry.
You're steering me wrong.
MOU.
MOU.
Supposed to be my vice mayor. Consideration of adopting a resolution authorizing city manager to execute MOU with rose to recovery.
I motioned to adjourn the work session. All right, I made a recommendation that we would move it to finance on May 25th, or March 25th?
Yes.
And?
Like 12 hours ago, right?
Yes.
Give me a little slack.
Yes.
No, no, the same, and I said May, so it's fine.
Yes, yes, you did.
We're moving it to finance on March 25th.
Yes.
Thank you.
Yes. Consideration of adopting a resolution requesting the Commonwealth Transportation Board provide economic development access program funding. This went to physical development this afternoon. Turn you over to Mrs. Timmer.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. Mrs. Upshore has been working on this diligently, and essentially what this is allowing us to do is leverage funding that's currently in the budget in order to access grant monies. And so it passed unanimously in PDC. Monies would go into contingency, they're already accounted for in the line item of the budget, and then they'd be returned back to that particular usage. Thank you. And I make a motion to adopt.
Second. Please cast your votes.
All right, initiating the vote now.
Thank you. Got it.
I'm pushing Evo, but it's not working.
Okay, thank you. Motion passes 7-0. All right.
Good job, everybody.
Next meeting is March 25th at 4 o'clock, second floor, training room.